Mr. Law?
Here.
This is Seymour.
Here.
Mr. Lian?
Yeah.
Mr. Fraise?
Here.
Mr. Seiver?
Here.
Mr. Cass?
Here.
Ms. Jordan?
Here.
Give some of them to us. The first item is a presentation from Dan Schumark, but I understand that Colleen is substituting in his act regarding Michigan's police placement and involvement in community art.
Colleen, do you want to?
Well, I have no formal presentation. We were told it would be part of kind of a discussion. I guess you're going to...
Yeah, for the Neighborhood Services Committee, I have a presentation.
So this was a presentation that came out of Neighborhood Services, isn't it?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And then I can be a part of the discussion or whatever.
And Seiver will give a presentation, and then if Colleen would like to add anything, and talk about my place a little bit, see how it relates to Southfield, what we can do, give her some ideas.
That sounds good. I can talk about some of the handouts that I need.
Great.
Okay.
I think it would look better if we had the...
You want to?
Yeah, both of them. Okay. And I think it's probably enough in here. I hope everybody hears me. I'll blow the program. I know that when some of you go places, maybe shopping as you're saying, for me, it's always public art. Any city I go to, I always check out the local museum. So for years, or streetscapes, so for years, I've been collecting pictures of public art. And as you know, I'm a big proponent and hope to revive public art in Southfield. We discussed this several times when we started the coasting, the Baseline Project in 2012. The Baseline Project now has $28,000 with more money coming, and there's an additional $12,000 in the Barbara Davis Community Art Fund that will be turned over to the city at the end of this month. It's been through the Community Foundation. Matter of fact, both funds will be turned over to the city until by Raquel on June 30th. So anyhow, this is a little bit of a look backwards, and then really a lot of creative looking forward. And the point I want to make is that public art is not just sculptures. So, public art for Southfield would have three kinds of value: commercial, social, and essential. I found this quote, "The range of responses to art that we as individuals have depends on our culture, education, and life experience." And obviously, something that you think is awful, somebody else thinks, "Oh, my gosh, that's the best thing I've ever seen." So, that's the beauty of art. The commercial value equals jobs, and wages, and tax revenues, and Colleen will probably have a lot to say on that. Art Serve Michigan has said that for every dollar Michigan invests in arts and culture, 51 is pumped back into the state's economy. Crane's this year noticed that Creative Industries, which includes design, not just public art, pumped $3.6 billion in wages into state wallets in 2011. Social and essential values, vibrant communities, we talk a lot about placemaking, quality of life, talent attraction. All of this is familiar to us because we've talked so much about it as we're doing the redesign of Evergreen Grove. Arts and culture contribute to the vibrancy of communities, creating great places to live, work, and visit, and destinations that attract talent and business development. So artistic components of placemaking are not just sculptures. There are murals, there are water features, there are fountains, weight binding signage, street signs, kiosks, benches, shelters, crosswalks, landscape art planners, architectural detailing, waitressing, ceterkels, clocks, street lighting, on and on and on. So for instance, you have your bland or your regular, and instead, the Arts District in Scottsdale, Arizona, has these very decorative signs to lead people from place to place. I really like what they've done in the Cultural Center in Midtown Detroit with the iconic skyline, and all through Midtown Detroit, they have, you know you're in Midtown because there is a neighborhood identity. I remember Ms. Jordan saying, "Well, I hope, last time we discussed this, that I hope this isn't just about the Civic Center." And no, it certainly is not. It's about neighborhood identification, you know, for all 27 square miles of Southfield. Here's another one, just rather than boring or plain signs, put a little extra and an artistic touch, street signs. I was fascinated by this. You know, we have street signs everywhere. Here's one that is a steel beam with McDowell Road embedded in it. During the day, sunlight reflects off it because they're glass, so it kind of stands out, and at night, it's lit, and you can see the solar panel behind it. You know, a number of these public works pieces where money is spent, sometimes it's about spending a little extra money for something with a little more design or thought to it. Water features. I think it's self-explanatory, everybody has gone to water. This happens to be Cranbrook, but the serenity that water brings, plus the light there, fountains, kiosks, we've talked about that for Evergreen Grove. Benches, rather than just your plain old bench, this particular bench, right behind here is a McDonald's restaurant. McDonald's paid for this bench. The city approached McDonald's about some kind of art placement. So it doesn't have to come out of municipal budget, but this is a really cool feature, or street feature, or something like that. Here's another one that I came across that I just thought, "This is phenomenal. This is your typical bus shelter." It wouldn't go with what we've already picked, which I think are very nice for Southfield. But the whole idea is you have a bike rack, you have a waste can, you have your bus shelter, and it's an artistic statement. It's not pedestrian at all. Waste receptacles, you know, the city uses a lot of 55-gallon drums, painted green or red, white, and blue. Here's something a little more classy. This I also thought was really unique. For the crosswalks, they applied a coating to the street. It kind of, I don't know, it looks like water moving. They also have these panels, which are sunscreens, but they move as people wait to cross the street. The sunscreens are an artistic statement, but they also give a little better look at them. They're really very simple. They're painted, they're multicolored, but they're just hung on wires. This is a sound wall. I know, I was relieved 20 years ago when 696 opened, and it wasn't just a cement slab that they did put some kind of decorative feature on the sound walls for the freeway. Public Works, street lighting, you know, we do a more traditional street lighting on Civic Center Drive, especially through the Historic District, but I found these, I thought these were really, these ultra-modern ones were very, very cool. This is just one of the most amazing things that I've come across. This also is from Scottsdale, Arizona. What you have here, they have flash floodprots, and so they have arroyos, and of course, there's residential neighborhoods all along the arroyos. And so what they constructed was a series of cement berms, I guess you'd call them, to slow the water and retain water during flood events. They get these torrential rains, especially in the summer. So instead of just having a cement berm, they, their Arts Commission put in these metal sculptures as if the horses are emerging from the bunker. You know, just incredible. It went from bland to beautiful. Landscape art, this actually happens to be in Southfield's backyard, somebody in Cranbrook. This one just kind of captures it all, the planters, the fountain, the water feature, the sculpture. There's a lot you can do. This happens to be, when I went to China last year, this is Tiananmen Square, and just incredible what they've done with landscape art, with the colors and the planting. Another one I came across, a sundial was made out of cacti. Planters don't have to be just boxes, again, artistic touch. Clocks, the one on the top, this is the new Shinola clock that's been donated to downtown Architectural detailing, you know, when we have new projects, we should inspire, instead of just putting up boxes, bland boxes. Detailing, again, this happens to be Cranbrook. I was talking to, when we had the Mayor's Roundtable, or tough open Mayor's meeting, I was talking to Scott Moore, Mayor of Birmingham, and I was asking him about all of their public art, and I'll come back to that, but this is what, this is their philosophy in Birmingham. Our public spaces are our community's living room, we should decorate them. This was a new office building in Indianapolis, and I just thought this feature was incredibly decorative and something very, very different. It added to just another downtown office building. Now, this piece of art you may not like, but I thought this was terribly creative. This is an apartment complex next to the Phoenix Art Museum, and if you rent an apartment, it's kind of a dated apartment, but they decorated it, the whole thing, all the common areas of the apartment and the outside are all sculptures. So again, you know, art evokes, maybe you wouldn't want that outside your window, but you know, it's really very, very creative. And the apartment owner, by the way, if you lease an apartment there, you get free membership to the Phoenix Museum of Art. Murals, this happens to be in Philadelphia, just dressing up an old building, I thought really outstanding. This is in Georgetown in Malaysia, in Tanang, Malaysia. It looks like marker on the wall, but it's actually metal sculptures attached to the wall. You can see the sidewalk here. And they have these all through their old town, and there's a little map that you can follow to find the messages. So again, it gets people moving. It reminds me a little bit of Grand Rapids with Art Fries, that, you know, it gets people exploring areas instead of taking the same path, and it's also, you know, highly decorative. You know, again, going back to the Baseline Project, David Farr has given his property over to the City of Novi, but not all of the sculptures are, been acquired by the City of Novi. This happens to be his yard. These are some of the pieces that, you know, I just think, David, it's tremendous. We all had the opportunity to meet him a couple of years ago when we started the Baseline Discussion, but it'd be great to acquire one of his sculptures for Southfield. After all, he's internationally known. We used to have a Louise Nevelton piece across the street. The Scottsdale Public Art Commission acquired this piece for their Civic Center. And look at what the Bean did, starting 10 years ago in Millennial Park in Chicago, what the Bean has done for a city park. People come and just stare at this thing because of how it distorts space and distance. But it's become a major tourist attraction in Chicago. Art on loan, this, again, you may not like this, but it was a big hit in Chicago, and moved then to Palm Springs, and now I understand it's on its way to, I think, Atlanta, making the rounds. There are cities that are glad to have Maryland. So then I want to take a little bit of a look at just a sampling of things that are happening in Metro Detroit. Wyandotte has a number of galleries downtown and has an arts community. Their public art commission put this sculpture by Frostik in a park. This was a totem pole, Wyandotte Indians, and Merrill Lynch has a large office in Wyandotte, downtown. They opted to put their Merrill Lynch bowl out in a public space in downtown Wyandotte. Garden City, if Garden City can do it, Southfield can. Garden City raised funds for a Welcome to Garden City sculpture and plaza that exists. I don't know, I think it's a save on drugs, takes away from it a little bit, but nonetheless, there's art in Garden City. Ferndale has done a tremendous job. And, you know, you can have public art, and you don't have to pay for it, or you give somebody else to... What they've done is they had downtown businesses finance the rental sculptures. There's the John Sauvay Sculpture Initiative, and there's the Midwest Sculpture Collective, I'll screw that name up a little bit. There's two that are collective of artists, and they rent their sculptures out, with the idea that some people may want to buy them, or the city will collect revenue and purchase them. So, this one is that, Dave Coulter tells me, the Mayor of Ferndale, that this Red Graham, people either hated it or loved it, but drew a lot of public comment. These are, this is at Woodward, you'll recognize Como's probably. And then murals, this one was done by, it's really sort of a commercial, but it's, to me, it's not a commercial, commercial. It's Dunkin' Donuts provided the mural, so they had a corporate sponsor. I didn't, instead of showing you all of the Birmingham art pieces, because there are many more than are on this list, I just thought, "This is incredible. Look what Birmingham has done." Most of the pieces are either, you know, a couple are donated, most are on loan to the city. They managed through their public art commission to get people to loan them art. And then a couple were purchased, like the Marshall Frederick's. Royal Oak, just two years ago, started a public art commission, and they came up with, I think, a tremendously novel idea. It's called Arts Explored, and what they do is they ask, they invite artists to submit by June first a sculpture or a piece of art for public display. And then the public art commission weighs it, and then they pick the winners, I guess you'd call them, and those places go up in July and stay through the following April. It costs the city virtually nothing. And yet, they loaded, here are two examples of pieces that were loaned to the city through this program. The, again, the Phoenix Art Museum does this. They have a major show every fall, they invite artists, and then they sell all the pieces out of the museum, and the art is up for months. It's a great way to have art at low or no cost. Then we have Southfield. And we used to, you know, we had this emphasis here, it's done, and I remember, and anybody that perhaps said, we had a lot of, for a while, we really had some mojo going on public art. This is one of the pieces that we commissioned by Max Leatherworth, and it got moved to a place that most people don't even know it's, we have, it's stuck out back on what was supposed to be the sledding hill. Really not seen. I think we ought to look into moving that. And then we have this piece that's left. This is at Barbic Woods on Nine Mile. It used to be in the center of the lawn between the woods and the street, and then I think the lawn crew got tired of mowing around it, so they got pushed right next to the woods, and this is what's left of it. But this was part of our '80s arts initiative. It also points out that I'm not naive to think that, you know, if we go out and get art, that we don't have to, there isn't some cost. It has to be maintained, it has to be secured, anything that's heavy has to have a base. But, you know, at any rate, something ought to be done about that. So, then I look around this complex, and I'm thinking, "The plaza in front of 46th District Court, that's begging for something out there." I mean, we had this huge space, and there's nothing on it. We ought to have something there. Then we have, of course, our plaza out back, which is gorgeous, a gorgeous space. The landscaping is nice, but still, there's a lot of room that we could hold events out there, make an artistic statement. It's another possibility. And then, of course, we're talking about this whole, you know, our city center, and this whole area is just ripe for public art, especially as we widen the sidewalks and do all of that non-motorized pathways initiative that we started. So, the process to return public art to Southfield is Creative Planning Guidelines for the Inclusion of Art and Artistic Streetscape Amenities for Public and Private Projects, draft an ordinance that requires a contribution. A lot of cities, it's 1% to 3% in projects over $5 million. I know that Terry has been successful in encouraging the, some of the new projects that are coming along to make sure that there's an art component. And then Creative Public Arts Commission, that would raise funds and oversee the installation of public art, as defined in this presentation. The mission, to enhance placemaking in the city and expand the public's experience with and appreciation for art through exhibitions and placement of art in public spaces. The commission's purpose, and again, this is deeply presented to you in December of 2012, encourage and stimulate citizens, developers, landowners, contractors, and architects to support displays of art, reinforce city placemaking, identify opportunities for art in the city, promote community identity through art. Southfield Neighborhoods provide a system for review and acceptance and placement of art, partner with galleries, artists, museums, art professionals, architects, community members, businesses, planning, and so on, to create landmarks, artworks for the city, create and implement community education and outreach programs. You know, and things like the DIA program, that's wonderful, but we really need more. Collaborate with city staff and contractors, involve the major capital projects, promote community identity. We've already talked about that and so on. Membership, and none of this is in stone, this is just a suggestion. I'm suggesting a nine-member board because you need some people that are connected to funding and the art world. And they're probably busy people. I mean, I think of our Grammy Award-winning artist. I would love to have him on an art commission, but would he have the time? I don't know. We have a wonderful gallery here, Park West. Would they have the time? I don't know, but those are the kind of people that we need. Southfield School, I know, has some outstanding art educators. So landscape architects, planners, others with experience in public art, the administrative liaison would be the city planner, and the appointment by mayor, council, divvy-dub, however you see fit. And finally, I was just walking down the street on one of my art tours, and I came across, I don't know this guy, but this is what I love about public art. He was with his girlfriend, and he saw this and had to do his thing next to it. So, that's what it evokes. So, anyhow, this is the presentation that I took to the Neighborhood Services. They endorsed it, bringing it to full council, but first, to take it to the Total Living Commission, which I did a couple of weeks ago. Total Living Commission enthusiastically endorsed this. Harmon is here, he can speak to that if he wishes. But we'd like to get the ball rolling this time in terms of public art.
Okay, let's, why don't we do this, first of all, if we want to establish information? We'll go around to... Do you think Colleen would...
Yeah. Could we call on Colleen?
Sure. I would like to say a couple of things, if you don't mind. That was, that's wonderful. Great ideas. Okay, let me take some...
Can you give her information?
No, that was excellent, because really, everything's about design, whether it's poor design or good design, our everyday life, everything is design and how we interact with it. And how we define placemaking is really capitalizing on a community's unique distinctions, and you mentioned the history and the diversity, so that would be something that Southfield could, you know, base their art on, that type of thing. But also integrating a lot of mixed uses.
And if you could address the council...
Pardon me?
If you address the council...
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Okay.
You really want to, you want to integrate a lot of mixed uses, and you want to, you want to connect, I'm sorry. Get over further? No, go through my phone. Oh, okay, I'm getting that in the back there, okay. You want to connect people with the project. I mean, placemaking for us is really a grassroots process, because it's all about that human emotion and how people connect with their places. I'm so used to giving, when I give presentations, you know, I try to remember to talk to everybody, and I got to remember this is a company, so I apologize. So when we talk about sense of place, we're really talking about, again, that human connection between the places that we call home in our community and the people. So it's a very, it's a very much huge civic engagement process. So, these, I think this is just wonderful, what you guys are thinking of, and the pictures that you showed. We've done that tour around when we've traveled around and shown how design is used to enhance, you know, the living and that type of thing, living situations. Because, you know, I want to go back to the sense of place, when you're, when somebody says to you, "Why do you like Southfield?", you know, "Or why do you like your particular home or your community?", it's those things that you think of right away. You think of, "Oh, because I love the art park," or "I love a restaurant," or "I love this coffee shop." Again, it's showing that human connection. So, I, you know, what we talk a lot about is getting the community involved. So I know you're talking about an art mission, that's all very important, but you might want to consider getting the key stakeholders in your community as well. I mean, and that means residents, that means businesses, that means, you know, public-private partnerships, because you want the people there. Now, a lot of these pictures were taken, I could tell, like in the winter and things like that, but your public space isn't successful unless you've got the people there, integrating. And a couple of things that I handed out to you was, one was on the St. Joseph Public Park. Now, that's a wholly different community, but what this is, is very much an interactive art project, public art project, and everybody has been to St. Joseph in the last few years. But I mean, they're using their local artists, they're building these molds, and then having them come in and cover these molds, and these are very much, they really talk to the kids. I mean, I've watched little kids... I mean, I've watched little kids just be around, try to figure out everything they use. So, you just, you know, it's become a destination because of their art on the streets, but it's very interactive. So, I think one thing to keep in mind, and one thing that's really, really important, is to make sure that your community is engaged and you have buy-in. Otherwise, they're not going to probably use it. It has to make sense to them, it has to meet their needs, and you've got people of all ages. I was looking, you know, at that picture you showed on the Sixteenth District Court, Court Health there. That's right, yes, for art, but also just for a public space. I mean, there could be a whole series of uses there. I don't know if anybody's heard of Friend Kent, the project for public spaces. You might, Myra, we've talked, Dan's talked about it over the years out of New York City, and they do, they create public spaces, but they come into communities and they work with the community to decide what they want there. They do this all over the world, and, you know, they always say the power is ten. You want to have maybe ten different things going on in that area, so you want something for all ages. Maybe it is a really cool park bench for somebody to sit down on, or maybe it's a water fountain that kids can interact with, or piece of art that somebody can look at. But, you know, you might want to, you know, we can provide a lot more information on that kind of thing as you move forward. But I do think that community engagement is extremely important, because it's going to be, it's the residents that you really, you want to be using it on a daily basis, that's just, you know, that's just going to bring you more economic, you know, it has a good economic impact, it has a social impact, it creates safer spaces for people. So, there's, there's a lot of good reason to make sure that you get that buy-in. The other thing, and you must be familiar with Luddington, and their art park, yeah, that's another, now, that's one that's really, you know, doing a little bit more what you're talking about, celebrating their heritage, their lumbering, and their merry-time heritage through their sculptures, and that just continues to grow. Restaurants have opened up because of that, businesses have opened up because of that. I mean, this, this thing doesn't stop. I did this case study actually two years ago, and the individual that's kind of leading it, who is out of the, not part of the local government, but he just said it keeps growing and growing. And this is another thing we also say, is that we, we talk about local officials or local government being the host of the party, not the life of the party. So, that's where you, you know, you assemble, you get all these people together and all these thought ideas and the, you know, I mean, it's important to have the art people there, but it's important to have somebody that's just off the street to see what they want as well. And then you facilitate that conversation, and then you let it happen. You know, you get out of the way, and you try to make, make that happen, what your citizens want, and that's, that's that emotional attachment to your home, you know, that's what we really call that sense of place. So, that was, that was just a thought I had. The other thing, I don't know if anybody is familiar with the new law, the crowdfunding law that was passed in December. I mean, this is going to be a game changer, really, and this is ripe for these kinds of projects that you're talking about. MEDC, Michigan Economic Development Corporation, is actually working with us, and they are going to be giving us some grant money, and where we can, for public, for public space projects. So, they will match, so let's say you raise twenty thousand, they'll match twenty thousand. We're just sort of finalizing the details on that. But what crowdfunding really lets you do is, you know, before, we only had Kickstarter or some of those that you can, you can get rewarded for investing, so you get a t-shirt or something if you put in twenty-five dollars. Now, the ninety-seven percent that never could, because we never had, you know, I think you have to have over two million to be able to be a real investor, now, the ninety-seven percent of us can actually invest. We can invest in a local business, we can invest in, you know, a project in the city up to ten thousand dollars a year. And, you know, that's what you take then, if you raise so much money and you need a bank loan, I mean, in this case, it may not be your case, but then you can get that, they can see that this is a project that the community has bought into because they're the investors. So, this is something to watch. We're crowdfundingmi.com. We're going to inaugurate this, should be up on our website next, should be live next Monday. It's just really an education piece, and then if you're really serious about doing that, we're working with some partners, so that, that could help you along on the funding piece. And we also would be happy to come out and do a little more extensive training and help and more conversation with you if you do decide that's the direction you want to go.
Yeah, I'm okay with taking the voters, that's okay. I do have questions though about the process.
Let me do a consensus first to see if we're all on the same page and willing to establish a Southfield Public Arts Commission, which I would be interested in. Just yes or no at this point, and then we're going to come back.
Yes.
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 Yeah, but that's very broad.
Right. Yes, absolutely.
I say yes as well, so let's establish that we do want to establish a Southfield Public Arts Commission, and then, what is the question here?
All right, with Mike, I'm Steve, Val. I'm going to give everybody a little bit of history. Where the Shrine is building, remember that? Remember that building? It came from the Shrine is building, and we did that out with some churches, and we hoped one church would have taken it. But let me, let me tell you about the, we started a north council, we had a north commission at that time, and I was on it, and I did my own. I went ahead, I have a nephew, a New York famous artist, whose art is hanging in the Guggenheim Museum. He gave me six oil paintings, and I hung them in that building where the Shrine is on now. But in a short period of time, they were stolen. We wouldn't achieve anything of any value in that building, because we had no security. We started, there was utterly silence from the city of Southfield, from the people here, from everybody, silence. We couldn't, I used to raise money from the Shellstock, I remember donating five thousand dollars one time, and I'd love to pay the orchestra that we had one time for the end. But everything seemed to fail, it was, it was putting your head against a steel wall, a concrete wall, couldn't get help from anybody, nothing. I'm very happy to hear this, Ken, I'm very happy you are chairing some of this, and you're starting another arts commission, and I hope it succeeds, and I hope you, however I can. But we could have had this years ago, nobody can, nobody. So, the pictures hanging on the wall, the oil paintings were stolen, and other things were stolen. So, I hope it doesn't happen again. I can go on with this, but, you know, I'm happy to hear about this, Ken is doing a good job, and I hope we can help, the city can help donate some money, that's what they want to do. I hope council hears that. They're going to need some money, we're going to have to give it to them this time. So, that's enough.
Yeah, I'm, just like Mr. Lance, I'm in support of this, and I think this is sorely needed. You know, we're in a global war for talent and for creativity, and I think that this will really rejuvenate some of the things you're doing there in Southfield. I think the existing residents would benefit from it. I think it would make us an attractive place to have newer residents come to the city. So, I'll start by saying, totally in support of this, but I do have a lot of questions about the process. I don't know if Ken can answer it, or if Colleen can answer it. What typically is a city's interaction with the public arts commission? Do things go to council for direction, or is it part of the site plan? You know, it is kind of broad now. I'm absolutely in favor of moving it forward to kind of iron out those details, but what are, for lack of better term, best practices that other communities have engaged in? How does, how does a public arts commission work with the city to kind of go forward with that? And the example of the Dunkin' Donuts, I think that's, that's great, you know. I don't know if the Dunkin' Donuts decided themselves, we're going to build a mural, or if the city had it, you know, within the site plan, that you have to have some sort of piece of it, is art. I saw that if it's over a five million dollar investment, a certain amount of money has to go into it, but what do, have cities specifically set for existing projects? You know, this, this is what our standard is, this is our expectation, or is it, does it go to the public arts commission first? What has been the process?
They're independent. They're appointed by council, like the planning commission or any other body, and they set up, you know, bylaws and procedures for accepting art and jurying art. All of this, the research that I've done, is all on city websites, all across the country, big cities and small. I know when we first discussed this, I gave, too, I think, San Diego and Chicago and a couple of other big cities, how they do it. And, you know, I just said five million, because I saw that over and over again, but it's an ordinance, creating that ordinance, and then the city council creates a public art fund, kind of like Art Tree Fund. So, if you don't, you know, if the developer says, well, I don't have any room for art in my project, or I'm really not interested in that, but Southfield says, two point five percent of the project has to be devoted to art, so then that money would go into the city's art fund, just like developers who take trees out and don't replace them, they have to put money in the tree farm.
Captain Tree.
I'm sorry?
Captain Tree.
Yes, so, that sort of thing. And, you know, what Colleen said in here is, I think public engagement in this is terribly important. There has to be, you have, you know, it's kind of like we did with the baseline project. Before we even started raising money, we went out to a community group for six months, after community group, after community group, and got, got their awareness. Consequently, when we went to raise money, it was all new sources. People had never been asked before, like telecom, credit, now vibe, credit union. You know, they weren't the Providence Council, they weren't, they weren't, they were, there were people that had never been asked. And I found on Eight Mile, a lot of the businesses on Eight Mile said, we get it, you don't have to sell us on this, we need to do something about the image of Eight Mile, this is something positive, yes, sign us up. And so, in some, some respects, it was easy, but, you know, and then just managing these creative ways, like Royal Oak is doing, with getting art submitted to the city, you know, again, the city's cost is minimal for, for something like that.
If I can continue, I agree with that. I went to art prize for the very first time in September in Grand Rapids, and there's really nothing like that on the metro Detroit area, and we don't have a DeVos family to fund it, but even if we could figure out a way to utilize maybe the back campus of Southfield City Hall to have maybe the month of October, whatever, we just have art on display, it would get people out. I think that would be a good idea. I think if, if we move forward with this, the residents will be engaged, but I do agree with engaging the residents on the front end, too. So, I'd like to be, you know, I'd like the council to continue to shape this, you know, this is a very first meeting about this, or first real discussion about moving forward, and I'd like to see us shape it and see what our, our commission could be. So, I don't know what the next steps are, but I'm going to be supportive of them. I, I am.
Yeah, I was going to say, you know, this, we've been there before, so it should be easy to recreate something like this, and I thought that we were moving in the right direction because we had people in the community who loved art and were pushing it from the outside into us, and, and it was easy to get people from Bendix involved and, and some of the corporations involved as well as the people. And then it was also, I think, important that we had Bruce Schmidt, who was very involved with the arts, to be a staff person, who kind of also was the liaison between the council and the commission, and kind of made everything work smoothly. And we have tremendous art shows here, outdoor art, the state outdoor art show was here on the plaza, Miss Bellinger and his buddy, King State, was part of that, the outdoor sculptures. So, we had been there, and, and it worked, and I think if we could take the, if we could get ahold of it somewhere, the Arts Council documents look like that, how it was formed and how it worked, because it did, it was very, it was very successful. And I don't know, I think Mr. Gray, was it his name, that did a whole lot of art, used to come to council meetings and present his artwork to the city.
A lot, some people don't know it.
Yeah, and, and of course, then we had the wildlife, we had the wildlife here, you know, with people bringing all the art, wildlife artwork here, we had the whole pavilion, and we had people making things, and, and that was just jammed constantly. So, I don't know where we fall off the cliff.
I know where we fall off.
I need the arts, but, you know, I think it really starts with council really wanting it, and, and then it seems to get the support of the council, it's very important that council supports it, and the mayor, to make it work. And so, my suggestion would be to see what other communities are doing as far as ordinance, and then see what our ordinance look like, that, and how it was set up. There was a proposal here with the nine members, I think that's, that's nice to have nine members, and it was, as Ken talked to me, the last time, Myra and I had seen this presentation, and I was thinking, this afternoon, I came by Telegraph, Twelve Mile Road, where they were digging up everything, and I was saying that, you know, if we could get just auto dealers to do from I-696 to the end, north end, I mean, what a demonstration we would have to the rest of the community. I always say, even when you, when you pass that asphalt, get on the concrete, all the such things, like, I say, I would like to have something south of, you know, that, and really demonstrate, and this is the city of Southfield. I mean, you have Myers.
Exactly.
You have Myers, and he's involved in Grand Rapids.
Yeah.
You know, Chrysler, Myers, we have Bus Auto Manufacturing.
And we approved of Kamau, the robot in the center. We could get Lear and Denza to...
But, but we have something going, and because we had the landscaping, it would take somebody, now that, they're just getting in, putting the irrigation in to, to have these different things, and at the north end, I'm looking at the north end, there's the triangle, as you used to turn going, well, now it's up high. There's a triangle there, and I said, well, that'd be a neat place to have, because I had a small figure, maybe some heights to it.
Yeah.
But, yes, I am just a hundred percent for that, you know, having been in school at Cranbrook, you know, many times I was there this weekend, or reunion, and it just added more art to their campus, and of course, they have the Art Academy that joins it. But you can't imagine how people just look around and wanted to see the art pieces, take pictures, take pictures, it's just something I think that municipalities show that they're, they're with the program, so to speak, and that they're futuristic and visionary, and, you know, I bring young people, too. And you talk about LTU, we've got some, they're sculpturing, I understand, over there, too. And of course, having the Art Academy at Cranbrook, we have right next door, someone that we could get involved in it. So, I am a hundred percent for this, and I think that, I'd like to see something while we're digging on Telegraph Road and say, see if there's some pieces that, you know, I don't know what strategically you could replace there, but I'd like to do something that would look like a real demonstration of artwork in this thing. Anyways, Master, I think, for me, I'm a hundred percent for it, and I think we have a lot of business people who would like to give money to get this, tens of dollars or something like that.
Thank you. So, one person that would really, that should be in this meeting, who was involved with the outdoor sculpture when we had it, was Mary Karlock, and she should have been invited to this meeting.
She couldn't come tonight.
Is that right? Okay. She did, we had, at one time, we did have outdoor sculpture... Is that right? Okay. She did, we had, at one time, we did have outdoor sculpture along Evergreen Road. And I think there was some fear of its safety, and it eventually was moved back to the plaza, back here. And eventually, you know, because it wasn't seen, I suppose, for various reasons, it was stopped. But we also have Myla Ballinger, she was the cultural arts director for the, for the city, which she was a parks and recreation. We did have the wildlife art show there. They ceased coming because they weren't making enough money. I guess it was just, you know, at certain times, in the economy got bad, and they weren't making money, they stopped coming. I like the idea of public, of sculpture, and I like the idea of sculpture on the median and Telegraph Road, and some of the, some of these major sites. I'm concerned about how this group is put together. I think we have to be careful. We definitely need stakeholders in that group. But we have to be careful in how we put this together. A lovely outdoor sculpture idea, and that adds, you know, you can do whimsical stuff, that some cities have done, and that's fine, too. That's kind of seasonal. But to have some public art in very public places, I think, does add a lot to the community. I have a large background in art, studying art, but also being part of an international art center, and a museum, nonprofit museum, and art gallery in Detroit for 12 years. We've guarded people from all over the country. So I, you know, that's something that I care about. I think we have to be careful about who we put on this group, and have a mixture of people. I, I think, again, I support the idea of sculpture.
Yeah, I'm totally in support of this, too. And we're trying to, and I don't want to isolate the city center from the rest of the community, because I think we need to find places all over the community for art. But one of the things, if we want to make the city center a walkable place, I think, and I've said this before, I think it would be pretty neat, and I've seen it done in other communities, where artists hang their art in the lobbies of buildings. And it opens up the lobbies of buildings over there for people to see what the business is, as well as look at the art. And they hang it there for a period of time, and then it gets moved, or sold, or whatever, whatever happens to it. That would, I would think that that would help make the city center a walkable place, the kind of an environment that we're trying to create. But I am in total agreement with when Ken and I have talked about this, even before he brought it to the Neighborhood Services meeting. I think that artwork in all forms, and the one thing that we didn't talk about in this presentation is music. Music is an art form where we can also develop to have people bring over, maybe the bird, or somebody who likes it. Art is art. It takes all forms.
Yes, I think this is a very timely conversation. In choosing the art commission, I agree that we need to get stakeholders, and we need to get individuals who have some form of expertise. So that would be the criteria that we're looking for, when we appoint that person to the art commission. I don't know how this is going to happen, and Ken, you've got a lot invested in this. But where do we want to start? Because there's so many different areas that we can go to. We can go through cultures. You know, Connyac has now a, the canvas of Connyac. And so, there are like, major paintings that are posted on the buildings throughout Connyac. And so, our sign ordinance will not allow us to do that. So, we have to have, be aware of what we're asking for, because we have some very strict ordinance. And there has been some things people wanted to do, and our ordinance wouldn't allow it. So before we, so, just like the water features, fountain, is that where we're going to go? Because most cities have a consistent theme. And so, if we're going to say we're going to put water fountains throughout the city, or if we're going to do clubs? I mean, I really like the concept of the benches, because that encourages people to get out and walk. But what do we want? Because it's so broad, and there's so many places we can go. And once you, if we don't give, if we don't have a direction we want to go, you can have a commission, and it'll still be all over. You know, we may do one thing one month, another thing this month. So, would that be part of their charge when they first assemble?
It's not, this is not a cultural arts commission. This is a public art commission. So it deals just with, and I appreciate what Meyer and I say about music. We could bring a whole other thing on music, but this is not about music. This is about enlivening the streetscape. I think you start with the, getting the ordinance. In your handout, I just gave you examples of Birmingham, but you just go online and Google "public art commission." Tons of them. I read a whole bunch. So, I didn't want to, you know, kill the forest to bring all that. But I just, I just brought, you know, Birmingham. They, you know, the city attorney approved the language for the creation of the commission. Bylaws were established, and then criteria for, you know, you advertise for people to be hired. And I would see the boards, our boards and commissions vetting these people, the council appointments. But you have criteria that you're looking for. And unlike some commissions, these, you know, I think one of the reasons our community foundation failed, and I'm not pointing at any individual, but I think it was heavy with people who are well-intended and interested in Southfield, but who did not raise money. And when you're on a board that you're expected to raise money, you either give your own money, or you find other people to do it. And so, that has to be a key part in this. Because even if, let's say, we decide that we wanted to rent, we hook up with John Silve, Public Art, we could rent 20 pieces, put them on Telegraph, put them here, put them there. But you still need money for the transport of these pieces. You need money for the slabs and the security, to make sure that somebody doesn't take a fork with and swipe them. So, I mean, there is some cost to this. And then, all the public art commissions that I've reviewed have had a criteria for acceptance, and they didn't take just anything, that they established a criteria. So, I think some of this has to go, and I know that Nita Murray-Greer, I don't know if she's here tonight, but she attended Neighborhood Services, representing the legal department. And I think that's really the place we start.
We've already kind of started putting together a draft ordinance. So, when you're ready, it's going to be ready to go.
Okay. So, we're, you know, we're really looking at the creation of the commission. And part of the commission's job is public engagement. Absolutely. Through activities. I hadn't seen the piece from St. Joseph's, but that's phenomenal.
It is.
You know, and I think that you start, you know, it's infectious. What happens is that people get engaged, and more people want to get engaged, and more people, and, you know, that's the way you want this to happen. But we have to start someplace. And I don't see anybody out in the community saying, "Gosh, we need to, we need public art in Southfield." But I know there are people in the community who would support it. There are a number of people that I've talked to that would support it, or have ideas, or people that they would suggest the ordinance. So, I think we start with the attorney on two things. The ordinance for construction and the creation of the, or, I don't know.
Yeah, I, I'm particularly interested in that sculpture. That's my, I think, what's interesting most, because it really does enliven up the space, and it draws a lot of attention. But I also like, some of the things that I've seen in the past, in other communities, where they've decorated fire hydrants.
Yeah.
They have.
Way's cans.
Way's cans, and also, they build cows, or something, and decorate them in all wild, which you can do in warm weather. And I think that's a fun thing, too. I really like, I like that, the Wednesday that's going to be. And people have asked me, you know, "Why can't we do that?" I remember a number of people saying, "Why can't we get that started?" I remember when, the only art show that we had, because you and I can't watch to it. We didn't do it well. Other communities have done it better. And somehow, I think, we had a great show, but we didn't have a crowd that wanted. But that's, you know, we could explore it. I like the idea of having artists be able to do something fresh on a, you know, piece of, not just sculpture, but a painting, that could linger in gold. I like, I like those kind of impromptu.
Royal Oak is allowing, it goes to Mayor's point, they're allowing huge pieces, canvases on the side of buildings for nine months.
Well, we could do something. I'm not sure what it ought to be.
But that's part of their explorer.
Right. But I, but I think something that people could actually offer for sale. I mean, it would have to pass a committee to get it to be exhibited, but I think that would be good.
All the Royal Oak pieces are for sale.
Okay. That sounds good. I like that. When, we did have a music thing. Myla Ballinger was cultural arts manager, which included everything. But this is different. And I like the idea of public sculpture very much.
Everyone has been there, and we've been for, this is the first time this has been introduced to full council. But we do have a consensus that we do want to establish a public art commission. But I do think we need to see what, how other cities are framing that, what it looks like, and how we want to shape ours. So I think we need to come back to the committee again, with our community.
And what the next should be.
What it should look like. I think, we need to have our city administrators sort of decide, who that live on person should be. I don't think we should just say, "It should be the planner." I think we need to see if that fits, and maybe we need to have some discussion after that, on who that individual should be. I think the council's going to have to give direction in terms of what it should look like. So, somebody could, city center, I think, Eight Mile Road, North Lane, DVA, we've got all of our own telegraph, we're all over. So, I think we've got to give some direction on how we want this to move forward. So we're not all over the place, and nothing is accomplished. So why don't we start by...
Let's do a city hall, first.
Well, we need to, so why don't we start by giving it to you, Mr. Moore, just giving us some framework on what it should look like, what others need to do, putting out our previous ordinance, ordinance, and how that, and it's just.
Back to neighborhood services.
Yeah.
I might come back here.
I might, yeah, I might come back to council, I hope.
I might. I'd like to go back to Neighborhood Services, keep it small, to get enough recommendations to pull council.
But I mean, we've already seen what's come out of neighborhood services.
No, but I'm talking about getting into the nitty-gritty of it. If you're a committee you're able to do those things, though. I mean, come back, I mean, you really need to work that.
Yeah, you do.
That's what I'm saying, neighborhood, I, you know, committees are just going to keep that on, and come back with recommendations with the administrative city attorney, and come back to council and say, "This is your add," and make recommendations back to the committee, and how to proceed.
Let's see what makes this going, is it, do you need to go back to the committee, or is it ready for council after you?
Yeah, well, let us look at it.
I'm just saying, Richard Zong, you have a chance for it. And if you're really interested in labor, and it's got to go to someone who can spend the time and getting, and getting direction, and have, just pick up, if they give us a person who would work with us, some box and record library or something, make it happen.
And initially, I'll probably ask one new person, but I need to get in a three or four people. And the conversation about art and Telegraph, remind you, took us over a year to get that ad for coming. And M-Dot has made some real progress. But I could see us working a number of products. Maybe we're trying to get three or four pads every mile, start that process, and work some.
The nice for Telegraph is because there's money to get.
The SAV, and some of your corporate entities.
We have all the dealers there that obviously would like to get involved in it. I mean, it's got, strip there, money, money, money. And to get it started, I mean, it would be a...
It's a disability, and I have a house, and I have a little...
Now, where's, where's this going?
I'd like to thank Colleen for being here.
Thank you. And if there's anything else we can do for you, just contact me, and we could buy that off.
Can I just tell you, I just want to make a comment on the crowdsourcing. Mr. Freeman and I have been monitoring this for a while. It was first discussed two years ago, actually in economic developers' annual meeting. Been watching this nationally. It was originally used by the arts in particular Hollywood, for raising money. I have watched, it was somewhat amazing. I think some of you know that I spent five years as doing small business counseling, helping people raise money. I think it's a great vehicle. A message for all of us, though, that has the real potential to be used by people who are less, less than honest. And so, if that, if a buyer needs to beware, this is a periodic games commission is not monitoring this. You know, it is a phenomenal tool. But I, people can, ten random blocks, start putting a lot of money into something, and maybe not read a business plan. The business plan can say you're never getting a rate of return. So, it's something that we need to promote and plug, but very cautiously.
Okay.
Come look at this.
Colleen, thank you so much.
Okay, the next item on our agenda, that's a good item on our agenda.
My item, that's right.
My item.
President Bob Murray from Parks and Rec will be presenting this item this evening. Remind council that subject property is on our campus, and instructed to, therefore, as part of the lease, we want to bring this to council, that you're comfortable with this proceeding through the final process. And at the final stage of the final process, it will come back to council, or improve.
Yeah, every year.
And we have Brett, Brett Berg, from East City. Some good news, Miracle League, tonight. We have adults, adults playing, and I think there's a recent conversation about moving the Miracle League to just the kids. So now we have adults who have physical challenges playing, and it's a great thing. And I want to comment that the Miracle League helps the city fulfill its, its service in a special population, which is, I think, a real smart action.
Did you have the computer turned on here, or do you have a copy?
I wanted to thank you for having us back here. This has been a really long road for us. I want to take you back just a little bit. Eleven years ago, Steve Back came to us, and he presented this program that they're doing in the south, where kids with special needs could, you know, be able to play baseball, and at least for one night, you know, be able to be like other kids. And over the years, this has become a really popular program. I think Brett could help me on this. But I think we're up to like 400 kids that...
Yeah, about 400 kids. And what's even more special is, over 1,000 volunteers come every year to volunteer as part of it.
It's been an amazing program, and it's spread to other cities. Lansing has now built a Miracle League field, and Grand Rapids has one as well. Now, originally, they wanted to build this concession building, and you see in the ground lease that was mentioned made to that back then. Unfortunately, there wasn't funding at the time to put that in place. So, fast forward to last year, I came to... So fast forward to last year, I came to committee hold with Brent, and Brent had stepped forward with an organization that's been around for ninety-plus years to add stability to the Miracle Field, and he's been able to put together architects, building contractors, and money to now, you know, make this a reality. So it's been kind of a, but I'm going to show you how we started out. You have kind of our final version, but this is the first plan that was brought to us, and, you know, we found it to be, you know, kind of bland, so no kick to it. And so we put a committee together with Parks and Rec, Building Department, Fire Department was involved, Facility Maintenance, and we all put our two cents into it. J.W. Design come back, brought us another plan, we tweaked it again, you know, and now I think we have a building, you know, that we could be proud to have on this campus. It's really what we're looking to do with all our forty-year-old facilities, is to give them a kickstart. I think this is a good starting point, something we can work on to, you know, beef up our arena and some other facilities we have around here. So what we're looking for is your permission to, you know, take this plan to the Planning Commission for further review.
Do we have a rule ten?
If, you need to give authorization for the site plan to be submitted to the Planning Department to go through the process, so a rule ten would allow you to formally concur that this plan can be submitted, because you are the owner of the project.
I'll move a rule ten to the board.
We have a motion by Mr. St, for that, Mr. Crowe.
Yeah, we don't have any plans, any court plans to look at. This is just a process.
I, I do have a court plan. I have some court plans.
Oh, you actually do.
This is not formally site plan approval tonight.
I understand that, no, I understand. But this is the building that's there now, which needs changing.
It's on the same footprint that the original foundation was...
Are you going to tear it down?
No, no.
The building's gone?
No, it's never gone.
There's never been a building there.
Yeah, but that's the building.
Oh, that's the daycare building.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
It's gonna sit, it's gonna sit north of the A and B, between that building and the Rack Ball Court.
That's the brand of building.
Yep.
That's where they put in all the plumbing and the ground.
Yeah, it's the unsightly pipe.
And then we stop.
All right, we have a motion on the court to approve a rule ten, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
All right, I'll move the, that council authorize the Miracle League to submit plans to the Planning Commission to support.
Yeah, motion by Mr. St, for that, to move forward with the Miracle League field, all in favor.
Excuse me. The motion says to submit to the Planning Commission, are we talking about the planning department?
No, Planning Commission. It will go through a normal site plan process, Planning Commission, and it'll come back to council for approval.
But shouldn't it go to the planner, so that he takes it to the Planning Commission?
I think he's already received it, but I understand what you're saying. It would be in conjunction with the Planning Department.
Then the train has already left the station. Yeah, but it's already gone to the planner.
Well, he's, he has had...
But it's our property.
Yes.
And we're authorizing the building to be built. Shouldn't the first step go to the planner?
Yeah, and I think he's got a preliminary site plan, so he'll get formal submittals now. They can formally submit a site plan application. That's what they're looking to do.
To the planner.
I'll rephrase it if it...
No, no, well, I just want to do it right, so that later on...
I understand. I'll rephrase it if we...
Well, she says it's all right.
Well, it'll, it'll start at the Planning Department physically, which then takes it through Planning Commission, and then back to this body.
Who's the petitioner?
It will be the architect, but there is a, on the application, it indicates that the owner of the property concurs.
So who's the petitioner?
Well, the petitioner will be the architect, but you have to consent.
Is that the only other thought?
Exactly. You have to consent for him to go ahead and do a plan to build something on your property.
Which is why I don't think...
Correct.
Rule ten came in because we're doing it tonight.
All right, so your motion is on the table.
Okay, the motion I have is that council authorized the Miracle League to submit plans to the Planning Department, who will then submit the plans to Planning Commission to go through the most site plan possible. The city planner, and then will submit it to the Planning Commission to go through the site plan.
That's the intent of my motion.
I understand that, I just want to make sure that...
I understand. No? All right, free plan, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next item is the, this is the designation.
Mr. Crowe, and Ms. Karlock were not able to be with us this evening, so the city planner has been working with Mary Karlock and Mr. Crowe with the making this presentation as a guardian establishment of the historic district for the old aluminum building.
I had a log off because of the sun. Just forgive me, I think that timed off. Just need a minute to warm back up.
Council President, I'm glad we turned it off.
Right. If you need a little time, Mr. Crowe, we'll go to the next item.
It's just as soon as it warms up.
Yeah, we'll still go to the next item, that's really, number four, and that's your ward, right?
Yes, the begging ordinance. The Federal Court of Appeals recently weighed in on the constitutionality of ordinances and statutes in the state of Michigan that prohibited basically begging in a public place. Many cities had that exact language, so did the state. We had that precise language. And the Federal Court of Appeals looked at that and said that that was overbroad and unconstitutional. So all of those ordinances at that level were called into question. We also got a letter from the ACLU shortly thereafter saying, you know, you better look at your ordinance. So we did look at our ordinance, we tried to align it so that we are kind of balancing the rights of people to be free from maybe inappropriate type of contact in a situation where someone is asking for money, but also protecting and preserving the constitutional rights of the person who's asking for money, soliciting for money. And so in essence, what you see in your package this evening basically kind of comes down to two areas where begging would be illegal under this new proposed ordinance. The first would be where the manner of the begging is aggressive, and we define aggressive begging. And so it's not just putting a sign up saying, can you spare some change, or asking somebody, can I have a few dollars as they walk by, but touching you as they're asking you, or continuing to follow you after you said, no, I don't, I don't want to do that, or doing anything that would put the person who's on the receiving end in fear for maybe their own safety. So that, those are the definitions of aggressive begging. The second area where we wouldn't then prohibit begging would be in certain areas. And the primary area that pretty much everyone has looked at is by ATM machines, because it's certainly disconcerting to be there transacting business at a money machine and somebody's right at your shoulder asking for money. We've also included, if you're on privately owned property, if the owner of that property puts signs up saying, you know, no panhandling, no begging on this property, that obviously they have a right to that, and that would be another area where begging wouldn't be permitted. We also included outdoor cafe seating where people are trying to socialize at a meal. Again, some businesses are trying to go with those outdoor cafes, and we thought that that would be a good area where people don't necessarily want to be bothered while they're sitting there by someone asking for money. So in essence, those are the two areas now that we've covered, and if this council were comfortable with those areas and with what we've included, we would then bring this back on the sixteenth for introduction and approval.
Yeah, we heard that, I know that's the...
Oh, at the food truck? Right, right. And again, and I think it's kind of a delicate balancing, because certainly now the courts have been very clear that people have a First Amendment right to solicit money and say, you know, can, can you help me out? But we know that there's a converse kind of reaction, people on the receiving end shouldn't be, you know, right, and maybe put in, right, put in fear or in an area where that really that's just not appropriate.
Is that what the petition for comment goes to our June, Mr. Crowe?
Good evening, thank you. As Mr. Zorn has stated, I'm kind of conching here for Ms. Karlock. But I believe everybody's familiar with the former Reynolds Aluminum Building, which was constructed in nineteen fifty-nine, Munero Yamazaki, who was also known for the architect of the World Trade Center. And when the Reynolds Aluminum Great Lakes Region Headquarters opened in fifty-nine, the building was said to be an ode to aluminum, because it incorporated many of their products in very stylistic and architectural ways. At the top of the atrium, a large skylight makes a series of pyramids that flood the central core of the building with natural light, and that's still in existence. But I think one of the most iconic photos is this one that's actually at the National Archives Library in Washington, DC, is that originally the reflecting pools were filled with water lilies and surrounded the first floor. Recently, on Wayne State Campus, similar building, the Lily Pond Pool was just restored for two to one point eight million dollars. The building is also known for its gold anodized aluminum grills, which wrap the perimeter of the upper floors to deflect light, similar to what we saw with Lawrence Tech's new technology of having a skim to diffuse the heat energy. This was being done back in fifty-nine with the aluminum product. Again, the building is historically significant at an international level, both for its architecture and its architect. The existing site, the footprint of the building has changed very slightly since it was originally developed. On the first floor, the building walls were moved out to square up the building, and the trees were planted in the Lily Pond. But there has been little change to the exterior with those exceptions. In eighty-four, the building was converted for use as a Vic Tandy Health Club, which then changed hands to LA Fitness, and it's been closed since two thousand twelve. Recently, Abyssinian Physical Therapy has purchased the property and plans to consolidate their therapists as both an office and a physical rehab center, utilizing the pool and some of the interior renovations that the fitness clubs had used. As I had stated, the walls of the first floor were pushed out to the perimeter, and the reflecting ponds filled in and planted with trees. On a recent mid-century modern bus tour, a number of enthusiasts were able to get inside the building, and many of the original architectural features are still in place. So despite the alterations, critical architectural features of the building remain intact. So I think the staff is bringing this to council's attention because it does have a new owner. The building is historically significant. The best control is to have local historic designation to prevent any architectural renovations or changes that are not consistent with both the architectural and historic elements. And I hand out a process here. City Council by ordinance already has a process for establishing historic designation. We'd like to bring this back to your June sixteenth council meeting and ask through a resolution that you authorize the historic district designate a commission, conduct a study for possible designation under your historic district designation ordinance. The designation will allow the historic commission to approve or deny all work within the district to support the protection of this architectural masterpiece. So during the designation process, upon substantial evidence of significance, the council could authorize an interim historic district designation to at least protect the building's integrity as the new owner makes renovations. And I've handed out the steps. Again, it has to start with the council, they then direct the historic, a study to be conducted for designation, and by resolution, there's an advisory board, nine members, four ex-officials, including three regular members and two ad hoc that are designated by the council. The advisory board prepares a preliminary report. The report is then sent to the Planning Commission, the State Historic Preservation Board, other state agencies, the Southfield Historic District, and posted for a sixty-day review period. During that time, the commission creates a final report, prepares a draft ordinance, holds a public hearing, and then this gives the council the authority to designate it as an interim historic commission, which triggers review by the historic commission for any major alterations, based on finding of substantial evidence of historic significance. And then the advisory board prepares a final report to council, and then the council can approve the ordinance. Now, this could take anywhere from a couple months to several months, and we'd like to begin the process before any significant work is done. The owner would be required to be part of the process, so they would be intimately involved. Also, the locals historic designation gives the council the most control over any alterations to either the site or the building. But there's another incentive for the home, the property owner. If they go through the process with the National Register of Historic Places, they possibly could gain a twenty percent tax credit for the cost of rehab. So it's important that they don't get too far along on the rehab, so that they can qualify for the twenty percent tax credit. And again, there's a three-part process that's laid out by the, both the Michigan State Historic Preservation Office and the National Register of Historic Places. And there has recently been an increased focus on mid-century architecture, promoting its preservation, public education, and tourism by the Michigan State Historic Preservation. We've had two sold-out bus tours of fifty-five plus, and we found that people were coming from not only the city, but outside the city, outside the region, and even some international visitors who appreciate this type of architecture. And if we have one of the unique stereotypical or iconic mid-century buildings to protect, this is one that we'd like to begin with.
We have a few questions to see more.
Yeah, I don't know, I guess, it sounds like there isn't a cherry steel, it's a tourist, it sounds like there's an advantage to them having a historic district, something that's in front of us.
It could be.
Could be. My first question before you stated that was, would they resent, you know, resent us trying to do this just because it's that gold? I mean, I would, can it be restored? Can that be restored?
Well, the good news is that we believe the exterior, remove all the trees, and eventually the Lily Pond could be restored, and little else would need to be done without some maintenance work on the exterior. The interior has been already compromised in several cases by putting the pool in, but there are still, the sky roof and some of the other things are still in place. And remember, the commission and the study... And remember, the commission and the study, the committee, all has to involve the owner. So they would be part and parcel to the review process.
They actually go on the advisory committee in the initial determination.
Well, we should have to talk about that later, which, which.
Right, to determine whether there should be the historic.
And then, if I may, the work that is done to determine the historic significance would be the basis for applying for the National Register and the state historic. So that work, that research, the validation of the prominence of the building then would be rolled into the application. So that would be a benefit to the home, to the business owner.
So that helps, yeah, that helps.
Yes.
But is there an intent to restore that lily path or lily, the exterior, or was it the way it was?
Well, we did, we've only had some preliminary conversations with the real estate developer and the contractor. We've laid out our intent that we would like to ultimately get to that point. My understanding, again, during the winter, there was a break, a freeze and a severe water damage of over two hundred thousand dollars to the interior. And so I know they have substantial costs to repair and fix that, plus some of the interior renovations. And as they're working on that, if we can protect the integrity of the exterior as we go through this process, then maybe some of these funds would help leverage additional funding for preservation.
So you want to see you on a decision, it comes essentially ill-advised to restore that pond on the outside, the appearance of it could be restored.
Right, and I think one of the real simple things is, in this case, you know, I'm a tree hugger, but remove all of the trees that weren't originally there to open up the facade would be a very simple fix. And then later, as we seen in the example with Wayne State, private and public money were brought to the table to restore that pond. So that, this building has enough significance that we could possibly, with the study, attract donors to help leverage funding for the owner.
Yeah, I would love to see that presented. I think you answered my question, thank you.
All right, thank you, Mayor Lawrence. Yes, council, we kindly have two historic committees that work in the city of Southfield. One that runs the museum, then there's the one that we appoint in this process of saying that the advisory board has to go through the historic district commission. Somewhere along the line, we need to evaluate that because the people who are running the museum are autonomous to the historic commission, and now we're adding another body. So we need to, we need to look at that. I've always questioned why do we have a separate historic committee that runs the museum when you have a historic, and by our charter, we have the issue with the House, Council of the McDonald, the McDonald House. And that had to go before the historic commission.
Could I kind of go through the process a little bit?
Well, I'm, I'm saying, that's too many commissions. I hear what you're saying and what you're trying to do with this advisory board, but that would be the third committee in the city for historic, and that's too many. Somewhere along the line, we need to look at that. And I want to know why we have to have a separate commission to operate the museum that's separate to the one that's appointed to be the historic commission.
Well, okay, under the historic district ordinance that we have, that kind of follows the state law, your first committee is this advisory committee. Their sole function is to do the research, to find out whether there are significant and historical architectural features, building features, et cetera. That's, that's their job. And on those committees, they relate to one piece of property only because on that committee you put the property owner, you put somebody else who has knowledge. So for example, if, if this building were to go through this process, you'd want to put somebody on here in this ad hoc capacity that has the mid-century modern background. You wouldn't want to get somebody that's historic from the eighteen hundreds. You'd want to look at more of the mid-century. So they formed this ad hoc committee, this committee, just to make the designation. And if they found there was enough to recommend to this council that we designated, then they would be done. Once that occurs, they're done.
So they're dismanned.
They're done, right, they're dismanned. Then what happens is your historic district commission, which is permanently in place, the members are appointed and they continue and they're renewed and they're reappointed, they then take over on each piece of property that's been historically designated. And they look at all the building permit applications, they decide whether what you're trying to do is inconsistent with the designation. So it is kind of a two-step process. The one I can't speak to is the one that's running the museum. I don't know what, what group that is.
The historic.
Is that appointed by council or is that just, that's just kind of a group of residents that?
The younger person lives.
Okay.
Because they're, it has been brought to me, they're, they run the museum, and the tubes have, they're not allowed to crawl, and establishing these lines. And who appoints them, the historic commission?
We can certainly.
That's the one I, the society's the one we don't know.
Yeah, the historic commission is appointed by the council.
Right, that's under the sort.
And I, I think your analogy, there's a professor at Lawrence Tech who has expertise in mid-century modern that it may be appropriate for this project but not for a Victorian.
Exactly.
And you may have some members of the ad hoc advisory board that are permanent members, but then I believe they have to be Southfield resident.
Yeah.
So that's why, that's why there's this preliminary.
So when another building comes up, we're going to play another.
It could be a different, it could be a different series of expertise.
Right, right.
Hey, well, can we just look at the society?
Yeah, we'll look at the society, the least relationship we can turn to, or remind council, the sixteenth.
They do great work, but it's just interesting. Our city was so small of a historic designation, we have two separate bodies.
But you do have part of the community development block that calls it the historic preservation, we have the bird site, you know, and I know when we changed the windows out of the museum, that went in front of the commission because it dealt with the architectural allies or dead men.
Right, and then when you want to do the changes, you have to go to that commission and ask if this is consistent or not. And then they would approve it before you could get a building.
Thank you. Mr. Mann.
Yeah, I just walked in and I heard you sort of talk about a tax credit.
It's through the chair, it's a, it's a federal tax credit for the investment into the building, it's not a local tax credit.
Does that apply to other historic?
If, if they receive the National Register of Historic Places designation, then they are eligible to apply for the federal tax credit for eligible rehab on a historic building or a building within a historic district.
Okay, the old McDonald House, that's a historic designation.
It's a locally historic designated site, but I don't believe it's a federally historic designation. And the local designation, if I may, one protects the city from like a demolition or an inappropriate addition. So the local historic designation gives the city council the most control over any renovations or demolition. The next step, once that has been done, the research hopefully is valid enough that they could, the owner then could apply for the federal register certification, which then allows.
Why weren't they told they could apply for the federal designation?
I don't, I don't know.
All these years, and they're paying high taxes, now what applies to one should apply to another one.
And again, if I could, it's, the tax credit would be towards any major renovation that's historically significant to the, to the building itself.
Well, they did.
Well, then it's possible they could go through that process.
I wonder why they weren't told about it. That's, that's the problem. Okay, but I will tell them about it now. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Fager.
Yeah, earlier, actually this last winter, I was invited by the Michigan Historic Preservation Network to speak at the spring conference, and this year it was then on May sixteenth in Jackson, Michigan. I was invited to speak on mid-century modern Southfield architecture. A number of people had been on the tour, heard about the tour, and I was asked to present. And in the audience were two people that came to me afterwards about the Reynolds Building. One was Brian Conway, who is the head of the, he works for MISTDA, but it's the State Historic Preservation Office, who said, I've got to get down to Southfield. And after the mid-century modern exhibition is done on June twentieth in Grand Rapids that was last year at Cranbrook, he'd like to come down. And then a young man that his family have known for years, he grew up in Southfield, they attended Southfield schools, his sister still lives in Southfield, his name is David Shawn. David is an attorney in historic tax credits. He works out of Washington, DC for Nixon Peabody, but is here all the time because his parents are here, his family. And David came to me and said, you know, I'd really like to get with the owners of this building because we could work with them. And David is so invested in Southfield, and he, he bought six copies of our Southfield history book. He's here all the time, he loves this architecture, so he's willing to do something. Terry mentioned the prop at LCU, his name is Dale Geier, he's a full professor at Lawrence Tech. Dale is an authority on Yamazaki. He was invited to present at the Michigan Modernism Expo, a whole session on Yamazaki, Yamazaki's architecture and technique. We also, on the October mid-century modern tour, we had, in that picture on the second and third floor of the building, the, we have one of the construction managers was there that worked under Yamazaki. His name slipped my mind at the moment, but I've got his contact information. He would be an excellent person as an ad hoc person on this committee, both of these, both of these people. And I can get you the context, the contacts for them. The other thing is, the third floor is very much intact. The paneling is the original nineteen fifty-nine wood paneling is on the wall. The second floor was, you know, they took the atrium out for the swimming pool, so it's, it's partly intact. But the third floor is very intact, so there's, there's quite a bit. And then as Terry points out, the skylight is a very unique feature and it is intact as well. So there's a lot there that could be saved that are really iconic pieces to this, this building. So I'm certainly no surprise, all in favor of trying to pursue a historic designation for this building. And introducing the owner to some people who would be very receptive to helping them get these type of tax credits that could be, you know, it's a win-win for everybody. And it is an iconic building in Southfield that Mr. Mannion chose to include in our, even our calendar this year.
Okay, Mr. Fager.
Yes, I'd like to ask some, I think, pragmatic questions. People loved the building, and they had something in mind that they wanted to do with this building. And assuming that the structure of the building, the internal structure of the building doesn't fit what they want, what they want to do, and we make it a historic designated building, and they can't use it because they can't change it to do what they want to do, do they have any pushback to us or?
Well, I mean, obviously, the sooner that we get the designation in place before they start anything, the better. And Terry mentioned, there is this provision in the ordinance that before this process is even complete, because this could be a lengthy process, you could actually do an interim designation of historic significance on the property, which then would, for one year, put all of the components in place so that building permits couldn't be issued.
It just freezes work there.
It does, it does. And so that might not be a bad idea. I did talk to Mary Karlock about maybe looking at that, and she was going to, the ordinance says that that is, that is a potential for having accomplished, as long as you can convince this body that there's substantial evidence of significant historic or architectural, which I think is probably.
Right, and if I could, correct me if I'm wrong. It, it doesn't freeze it as much as then, it just requires that it goes to the district for review.
Right, and he's only, it was, it was put in.
And so many of the interior renovations would not affect the exterior, and they could proceed. It's really about protecting the exterior at this point.
Is that all we're worried about, the exterior?
Well, that's the one of the major.
I would, I would have thought we'd want to protect it as much as of the original building that's left, I would think.
Well, I think to the extent that this group is coming in for physical therapy, so they want the pool, they want some of those areas that are already there. So to the extent that the building has already been really impacted differently than the way it was constructed, it's still going to be usable and functional for their purpose.
Hopefully.
Yeah, and again, if this was in place back in eighty-four, then they couldn't have done the things that they did.
I understand all that, but they, they now own the building, they have something in mind that they want to do with it. And if the internal design of the building doesn't meet what they want to do, are they going to be able to modify the internals of the building once we make it a historic designated building?
They would have to come through the commission.
And we tell them no.
Well, and make a determination. And if we were able, if the commission was able to develop why what they want to do is inconsistent with the architectural significance and the building's significance, then they, then that's true. They could be told no.
So now they have a building that they can't use because we said you can't use.
Well, I'm not sure.
If I could.
I'm only asking a question.
Yeah, but hopefully what we would do is come up with a solution that was appropriate and also meet whatever needs that they had. That's the hope, is that it's a partnership. So we just don't add a big box building addition. If the addition gets added, it's done in an appropriate way. That's the ultimate goal.
Okay, well, I'm, I'm just trying to figure out how strict are we going to adhere to the current design without changing the current design and still allow them to use their building? Can we say, I'm sorry, you can't, you can't put a wall there, you can't, you know, you can't put a bathroom over here or a steam room.
And again, if I may, I believe that part of the study will help identify what is still historically significant, what has already been altered, and what can or shouldn't be done. That's part of, I think, the process.
I just don't understand, too, but.
Well, and I, I mean, we've had, we have several buildings that have this, and they do go through kind of a, it's a, it's a joint exercise where you have the experts working with the property owner and try to get to some common area where both sides' purposes are being met. But I agree, particularly with the exterior, you know, that's not necessarily going to change the functionality inside for their purpose. I mean, the pool is already there, so that was one of the key components. You know, obviously, we could say we'd love it to be restored to that condition, they don't have to do that. But on the other hand, once we get the designation, they couldn't decide to rip all the aluminum off.
Yeah, right, yeah, I, yeah, I'm just saying that, you know, once we sit down and meet with them, everything else, they as well. By knowing you're going to do all that, I'd have bought the building down the street, I wouldn't have bought this building. Because I can't do what I want to do with this building, I could with that other building down the street. But I got it now, and I got paid for it.
How many buildings have pools in it?
Well, I know that.
Assist their, what their goal is, so. I think my, we're going to, there is a process here, and it's not just necessarily, it's trying to make both sides' objectives, you know, kind of come to a middle. So I, I'm comfortable, but I do think that since, you know, they've just come into planning to start these discussions, you know, that there might be some merit in going through an interim designation sooner rather than later and get this thing.
If that's the only one, I think we need to do that.
Right, and I did indicate to Mary Karlock as maybe get with the LCU professor who could give us the evidence that we need so that you could go to an interim designation, so.
Just to piggyback off that question, if the owners decided that they did not want the historic designation, and please, what could we do? Do we open ourselves up for a lawsuit? They bought the building and now we're demanding this historic designation.
I guess if, if, it, where, I think what you're probably both alluding to is that maybe at some point, do our regulations, our regulations constitute taking of their property? And at some point, could that happen? I suppose as we went through a process and. as we went through a process and we demanded things and it, it, they had already purchased the building and they didn't, it, could it happen? I suppose we could get to a point where they might make that argument. But I think we're looking at a worst-case scenario rather than the two sides working together to, to make sure that the building is preserved, but also that they're able to use it for what they want to use it for. So I, I think, again, that it's a process that we work together on.
But if we don't talk about the worst-case scenario, and it happens, I don't want to get caught blindside.
No, I understand that. I understand that.
And, you know, I think my argument would be, "Look, this building's been sitting here since who knows when. If you really felt that way about when, you do it ten years ago."
Yeah, I, I, I can't disagree with that. And, and I think we've had those discussions with parts of the wreck. There's a few other buildings that, you know, you need, let's, let's get proactive. Let's go and get these things done before they're sold, and we have, we have a potential for the issue you raised.
Okay, all right. Thank you. That's it.
Mr. Guyer.
Two things. The Park House was moved from over here at Everveen Road and the expressway over to, to the Gert. And, and we went through the same kind of, well, of a, of a conversation. Now, we were, were getting pressured to, if I recall correctly, to put it back in its historical state. And, and the bid came in like some three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, uh, to, to bring it back to the exact historical conditions and, right, wood and, and all that. And, and that, and that kind of put the damper on, on it. And then there was the, the question, you know, do you protect the exterior that was the architecture of the time, and, and just make the inside usable? And, and how much would that cost? And, and that question, Myron, is still on the table, because that's why that question is, is sitting there. Sorry, you did one example. The other, the other is, when, when this came up, uh, one of Detroit lines, I don't know what his name is, uh, he came in, what was it, Valley, I think, wasn't it? Uh, and, and so, uh, I, I said that this is, is historical because of, of the history that I knew about it. And, um, and council brought in Yamazaki's son, and, 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 and a witness to state that this is a paradigmal building that was made as a sign that it just exposed all the products that, that they had for sale so that you could go to the site, see wear and tear, also see the, the materials that, that's why all the panels had different materials. And, and I got the hold of the double brancher and had it, you know, had a letter that it was designated under the state historical. And I told council that you could touch it, and he cannot do anything with it. But anyways, uh, they, they approved, uh, the ballot. I still maintain that, that, that that particular building should have been last, Delta used to be, the main floor was a gorgeous building, that the interior, um, should have been kept in its original state. But I, I, I believe that the council and also the historical group gave them permission to protect the outside, you know, and so, architecture.
The state, state?
No.
Because we didn't have a designation out locally.
No, but I think, but to approve, to approve Valley to do it, totally, because there was no designation on it. And I said there was, it's the state, and we're not the local. All right? And, and I had heard of the brancher that, in fact, they were going to do that to protect it. But they went ahead and did it anyway. I'm saying that only because, uh, I think the damage has already been done as far as, as preserving it as it originally was built. And, and it was a sad thing that Yamazaki's son came here with a witness to the fact that this is a paradigmal. And, uh, and yet, and I, we had, um, uh, the city center came into play, and we send out, um, specs to open up for design for the city center. And Yamazaki, the, the senior Yamazaki, um, wanted to, to get involved in doing the city center, and he gave us a book of his works within his, his, his document that he presented to the city. And in that book that he has, that building, this building is in his book and being, uh, part of his architecture, uh, to show the city what kind of work he does. So, so there was a conflict between his son and himself as to what that building is. And, and, and so I go along with the one who designed it and built it, that that is a very special building. And, uh, and, but as far as the interior, I, I don't know how you protect it now that it has been already compromised.
Yeah, I don't, I suppose we can say, you can't do anymore.
But, but, I, I'm in favor of, of this, of making this historical, to protect it from, from the balance that is before us. And, uh, and, and whatever it takes to protect it, I think the city ought to protect it. I don't care what the purchaser ought to. Now on, they should have done their own, uh, investigation of the building. It's, it's globally known, uh, as a Yamazaki building. I think that's my comment.
Um, the pool, what, I think it's the pool, and all the purpose of it.
It's the health club pool, and it's about half the first, it takes about half the first floor.
Oh, that's true. So was it like?
It's a big pool.
Was it a, there be cool or something?
It's deep.
The deep, is there a, how do you know that?
In your long term.
I, I'm totally in favor of anything we can do to protect this building, because I think it's a jewel, so. And I think to have it in actually, I mean, if we can do anything, then we can just preserve it. I wish we could have bought it. I mean, I don't, we didn't know. I don't know. Yeah, definitely.
We have a number of other iconic mid-century modern buildings. And buildings, to, to get a historic designation, they only have to be fifty years old. So I think this is kind of a lesson learned, that we should protect this architecture, uh, and start working on, um, other designations. I've done that inventory, it's part of our tour, and I have a lot of the, the architectural information, uh, that's part of the tour book that, that could get people who came on the tour. Uh, so, so I certainly to lend that. Uh, the other thing I want to say is, I want to go back to the Myron, uh, exchange between Myron and Sue. Um, David Sean, again, the Nixon Peabody Federal Tax Credit Attorney, um, said to me, "I'd love to meet these people. I want to bring them a carrot, not a stick." Those were his, his exact words. Uh, this building ought to be saved. Um, and like I said, David is in Detroit all the time. Uh, so we ought to, we ought to try and get him hooked up with these people. If they, you know, I, I think, I, I know if you came to me and said, "Well, this is what we're going to, this is what we're going to tell you you can do or can't do with your building," I, I might be a little upset.
Yes.
But if, if we came with, "Hey, here's something that'll help you finance, uh, the restoration of the building." You know, for instance, those trees have damaged the reflecting pool wall. Uh, the roots have expanded, uh, and cracked the, the walls that the pools were in. So to restore that, it's going to, it's going to take some serious cash. But they're still there, um, so that it could be done. Um, so, you know, again, I, I have all of David's contact information I can, um, connect to.
All right, Mr. Guyer?
I just want to comment on, on this, uh, statement. That is a standard in economic development in the major cities. And it's tied for a suburban community our age, and that, it was two years ago that the inventory was put together in a formalized fashion, and we were recognized with that, as tours have happened. I think this is a, if, if we were asked to defend the question from a taking, it's almost a natural step that we're taking. And then to have some type of legal expertise on, on hand, uh, you know, that we, you know, spend a few hours with this expert to any of these building owners and help them optimize this benefit. Anytime we can bring a federal tax credit incentive to our community in the scheme of things and we're beating it for these dollars, that's huge. Some of us on the economic development community, I heard George Jackson and the, you know, the young attorney from Miller Canfield talk about the number of different financing tools that went into the book Cadillac tool. This was one of, twenty percent off the depreciative base in year one. That's huge. And if we're, from an economic development standpoint, I'd like to have someone under a retainer, that when these folks are ready to strike, and we've got these districts in place, we've got a legal resource to refer them to, to help bring that incentive to Southfield.
Mr. Mannion.
Yeah, Fred, just thought, it's something which I hadn't thought. When he gets his designation, the federal designation, if the tax, the twenty percent tax deduction, would he give that some reduction to his tenants, the rental? The guy's making twenty percent more.
It goes into the rehab of the building, really, huh?
The, the initial purchase of the building and the, the investment. So if we were to invest in the pond, then that would all become part of that initiative base. And it could be done in the future, too. You could do one piece. Everything has to be approved by the Secretary of the Interior, and there's a process for it. But this is one of your better economic development tools at the federal level.
But there could be a deduction, right?
Yeah, it, it's twenty percent off in year one off the depreciative base, and a good landlord would let some of that benefit in or to his tenants. Not always.
Where do you find a good landlord?
I would like to answer that.
All right, get it, Mr. Mannion.
Keep that on.
Yeah, I have a good question. Um, we're kind of sounding an alarm here. Has anyone even talked to the owners of the new building? I mean, are they?
Well, if, if I could, we have been talking to the real estate broker who's been representing for several months, even before the purchase was consummated. And Mr. Sevis is, is trying to schedule a meeting with the new owner so we can have this, but this is not.
Could be mo, but it's not, it's not.
Yeah, and it's not new news. The anybody, any agent that we have spoken to in the last six to nine months on this property has been notified that this is a significant building, and that it was the city's intent at some point to get it designated, and they would be part and parcel to the process. So we've been very upfront with, but I haven't specifically myself or Mr. Sevis or anybody spoken with the new owner directly, and we're trying to set that meeting up.
So I, so we have a few other properties that I, I hope will come back to council to go through this process, too. But my question is, is what, you know, aren't there, aren't there roadblocks during the, the planning process, the site plan process? I mean, how much, you know, let's say another group, you know, quickly buys the, or acquires a, a building that we really want to preserve, don't we have any other hiccups to, for, you know, keep, uh, keep the facade, keep, uh, keep construction, or once, or once somebody purchases it, they can have at it?
Unfortunately, in this case, it's a permitted use. Uh, there's very minimal, if they're not doing any significant changes, we usually hit them up for, "Your parking lot has, uh, some potholes, you need to screen your dumpster." Um, the, the challenge is that if there's no significant change, then there's very little through the process. And even then, we don't have specific either architectural guidelines or historic preservation guidelines. Uh, we bring these things up through very subjective, um, special use requirements and so forth. But there are cases where it's straight, it's just a straight zoning approval with, with nothing, if they're not changing anything on the exterior, it's just building permits. And that's what concerns us with, with some of our buildings. We don't, if we don't protect them, then.
Yeah, no, then, I mean, then this whole process makes sense to me. I just hope that, uh, you know, real soon, we do get a list of, uh, other properties that really should go through this process before we sit here sounding the alarm again.
Yeah, if, um, looking forward, if these people at some point in time decide to leave the building, what, and if we, if we wanted to, for whatever reason, fill in the pool, could we do it? Maybe if it's declared historic, that's not part of the original history.
You mean if, if they didn't own the property, or we did?
Yeah, if they, if they decided down the road to get rid of the property, to sell it, and we know it works up for sale, could, if we decided to buy it? I don't, I'm just seconded. Could the pool be changed?
You know, my, what you always hear is that anything is possible with enough money.
Well, yeah, but you, you know, I mean, if you could fill in the pool and have it back to its original site, you say, you never know. I just want to know if it would be possible. You have a lot more use of it, but you have more use of the building. I mean, trying to, to enter that down.
Right. I would say, though, by going through the process, we need to have the backup material to identify additional funds and leveraging that could be brought to this project, whether it's this property owner than that.
All right, everyone is prepared enough to speak on this, and we need to get a consensus if we want to establish and sort of designation for the rental building. And this will move forward on our June, uh, we'll start with you, Mr. Mannion. Yes or no?
Yes.
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 I say yes. Thank you. All right, the next item on our agenda is somehow fireworks permit, and that's what we, thank.
Um, yes. Um, every year, council holds their annual fireworks display. This year, we held two twenty-eight, and they are, um, requesting permission from council to authorize them, um, to have this play.
Move rule ten?
Okay.
Go for it.
Motion by Mr. Mann, supported by Mr. Fryver, for rule ten on favor.
Aye.
O's motion.
Uh, I'll move that, uh, we, uh, we move, approve the permit for plum hollows to have their fireworks on June twenty eighth, twenty fourteen, with a potential rain date of June twenty ninth, twenty fourteen.
The board has got an invitation.
And it should get an invitation.
We have most friends, uh, not, for Mr. Fryver, to approve plum hollows fireworks. Any questions on the table?
Aye.
All right, number six, Mr. Mannion.
Madam President, we're requesting, uh, permission to increase our purchase order amount for the ally construction of Clarkson and JV Contractors of Detroit to perform asphalt and concrete, uh, maintenance, uh, in various spots and various locations throughout the city. Um, we currently have a PO in place with both contractors for new spot replacement. This will allow us to put another half million dollars into both concrete and asphalt. It's primarily in response to the severe condition that we find our roads in, uh, this year. In addition, I'm asking for rule ten on the trial. So, and we have spoke with both companies, both ally and JV, they have the resources to do this amount of additional work this season. It's a count.
Move rule ten?
No, I, I, well, go ahead, you think we're in with the motion.
Okay, I move the rule ten.
Go for it.
You think the vote on the rule ten?
We have, we have a, we have a, we have a motion for, uh, rule ten, um, to, to my people, all in favor?
Aye.
Uh, this is to the administrator. Um, we're putting a billion dollars down into asphalt, concrete repairs. Uh, my concern is, is that, uh, the jobs that they do, whoever does the job, either asphalt or, or the concrete, uh, somehow, somehow that these projects, either by district or something, uh, be, uh, acknowledged, uh, and, and the jobs all inspected. My theory is that, 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 you know, two people, individuals, asphalt and concrete, go do the jobs, and, and, and they'd come back a year from now, and, and we're redoing them again, and a million dollars is gone. Um, the example that, of something that really has bothered me, uh, is that, you know, I call the county, uh, Loscher Road, between eleven mile road and the expressway, and it's one square that is asphalt amongst everything else that's concrete. And, and the hole was big enough, the hole slab was low enough that And the hole was big enough, the old slab was low enough that you drove over it with your car and you had a cup of coffee and your holder, it was all over you. Right? I called them up and I said, what's that's matter with you guys? You just put in a whole new concrete road. Why didn't you just take the guy that was doing the intersection at 11 Mile and LaShur and just go another hundred feet and take all the asphalt out and make it concrete and everything would look the same? Well, instead of doing that, they came back and put asphalt back, and it looks exactly as it did before we did anything to it. There's still a big bump there, still a big hole there, and the square looks like it doesn't belong. And so when we do patchwork, and then on the good side is, they did one down here on the Green Road near Winchester, and they did a nice job with it, you know? And then you look at 12 Mile Road, and they put down asphalt, the county did, and it looks like the drunk was putting down asphalt. You know, I mean, it has no rhyme or reason. They did three quarters of the lane, and now the, I'd say the north, uh, can I say crack, or where it's coming together, and now where they went three quarters of the way, now you have two situations, that you have two cracks and cold pack in both places. So now you can't miss it. If you try to get away from the crack, you either to the center line, hidden, or you're now into the one they just put down. And so both, both the county and state and, and, and work that we do, I want, what we do, I just want to make sure that we don't put a million dollars down and do the kinds of jobs that the state and county do.
It is our intent to have all of the work being supervised, whether it's asphalt, both the asphalt and the concrete, and we will be mad if those repairs are done. And we're hoping, for example, if it's asphalt, you know, they would be cut out, clean, new asphalt put in there and steamrolled improperly. If it's concrete, we would be filling concrete with asphalt, we would be replacing the concrete with concrete. But all of these projects are done, it is our intent to have them, each company accompanied and supervised.
These two companies are low bidders. Do we have any, any, any way of seeing what kind of work they do, any references from other cities?
They've been working for us for the past year.
That may be scary right there.
But we did have references from other cities. I don't have the original write-off, so.
She did the repair on Winchester, I would bring it down. If that was valid, then we actually have some more to do, you know, where it's fading out for no reason, or that, those are some areas we're looking at, spending some of the money on that.
The telegraph road where the state did, it is all coming apart. The 12 Mile, they just, just, we still telegraphed it, that's a county connected. I just want to make sure that, you know, a million dollars is spent smartly and inspected properly, and if I go back over it, you know, six months from now, I won't see a mess.
I say what drove this, you know, I have a bunch of people coming, you do like they do, and a shopping center where they just go in and cut the guy on the spot out, good clean, you know, clean it out, put a good hot patch in. And frankly, after the mayor's last road, roundtable on road, we were Tuesday morning over in public works, we're like, what can we do? You know, we're doing the cold patch, we know we've got to do more. This is a response to try to do something with this.
Richard, look and see what the state is doing, and you see now a telegraph road, and I don't understand it at all. They've got a crack in the edge of the first lane, so to speak, to the edges, all right? They go ahead and if that's busted up, they go on both sides of it and make out a rectangle to take care of the center part. So now you still have a crack on the one side and this side, now you've got two cracks on both sides, plus one going, you know, you've got two going now east-west that weren't there before, and then you've got two going north-south that weren't there before, and if you go, you know, three feet, you're back to cracked again. I mean, I don't know where these engineers have come from, that just don't go ahead and fix problems and put in the whole, you know, lane so that it's done right. But I mean, these pieces, and they're all along telegraph road now, I see it all along schoolcraft, it's cutting out these little sections, and so now you go, you know, I mean, it's that awful. It's just, I don't know where the design work is coming from, I don't know.
There's no oversight.
You know, I mean, so down the road, you know, you're going to have, down the road somewhere, now you.
Excuse me, excuse me. Is there any other outbursts you will be asked, believe, this council?
So anyways, what eventually you'll have is you'll have more problems than you had originally. And I just, I just want to also make sure that our design of what we're replacing and doing is proper.
Do you want to make a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that these two individuals be awarded contracts, and we participate.
Be it upon me or not?
I need you to grant it.
Oh, go ahead.
Oh, you said you had one.
Go ahead.
Yeah.
Let's have the motion, please.
I'll put court down the motion.
And it was a resolution after patch to the letter of June 9.
The way this proposal reads, it looks like we've designated half million dollars to asphalt and half million dollars to concrete. Because we don't know exactly how it's going to come out, is there a way to not make the hard designation, but if asphalt repair takes $600,000 and concrete only takes $400,000, that we can move the money back and forth, rather than make a hard designation to half million dollars apiece?
Just cap it at a million extra for both?
I would. Frankly, I like that.
The motion, so we have to amend the motion?
I'll try.
With the approval of my second, I'll move.
I'll approve.
All right, we have a motion on the table. Any other questions? We have a motion on the table.
I don't need that, no. I'm sorry, could you repeat what you said, Mr. Land?
Well, rather than have a half million dollars designated to asphalt repair, half million dollars for concrete repair, it's a total of a million dollars for both.
It's flexible.
Yes, flexible. A maximum of a million dollars.
All right. So we have a motion by Mr. Patsy, supported by Mr. Cybert, would be amended, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Chair, I'd like to move that we go into closed session, and I would suggest that perhaps we do the communications first. I don't know, I object to that.
I don't see the need to go into closed session.
Well, I'm asking for a closed session before we discuss item number seven.
I'll defer to the attorney because I don't see.
There would, there would not be a basis for a closed session for an appointment, but if Mr. Cybert is speaking to conducting a personnel evaluation.
Which I am.
Prior to talking about an appointment, that would be appropriate to go into closed session, provided that the person who is the subject of the evaluation agrees that they would like it to be in closed session.
I will prefer to transfer closed to him.
All right, so we'll move to the other item, and then we'll take it to the closed session. The first individual that would like to be identified, Ms. Hands and Clark.
Good to see you this evening.
And you can come to the podium and give your business address, and you can have three minutes of your.
Oh, great, okay, thank you so much. To Mayor Lawrence and our absence, President Jordan.
President, I object to that because I had no, no idea that I was in the state till 10:30, 11 o'clock on this.
Yeah, I didn't know.
I think, I think, I suppose the, he's up there up to the communication. He's up there.
He's up.
Close, no, not. No, 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 take back that, yeah.
The meeting's open.
Yes, we're on communications. We're being the communication.
We, we're going to move that after communications, we're going to one, two, three, four, I don't want that. I'm not going to stay until 11 o'clock.
No, we don't have to be here. Fifteen minutes.
Yeah, we're not going to be here that long.
He's not here. He's not here, and then you have three after Mr. Clark.
We won't be here until then.
No, we won't. We won't. We should be out here in a half hour.
Okay, let's have, let's have Mr. Clark, please.
We'll be out here in a half hour.
Excuse me, Mr. Clark, let's have Mr. Clark.
Thank you, President Jordan, President Pro Tem, Cassie, members Seymour, Frazier, Moss, Lance, Cybert, Clerk Banks, the pleasure of being here. I'm here wearing two hats. First, as someone who's formally trained as a visual artist, have a bachelor fine arts in painting, I want to commend your consideration of a public arts council. I also think this commission could provide a great venue to showcase some of the work of our local college graduates who are studying art. Now, that is a recommendation, Miss Ritchie, I concur, because if I had some encouragement when I was in college, I may have ended up being a painter as opposed to a legislator, that was my original intent. That's not for a political comment, I just mentioned that. But second, though, I wanted to address the financial situation of the city in Southfield. I did serve in Congress for a term, and I believe that in the future that Congress will see that there is a role to provide better funding to cities like Southfield because they're aware that, quite frankly, it was because of the lack of federal oversight on many agencies during the housing crisis, that cities like Southfield suffered a severe loss in their property tax base and a resulting dramatic decline in property tax revenue. That's further compounded by the fact that Headley and Proposal A operates as a vice on this city, so even though we're having rising property values right now, you are not able to reap the benefits of that, further compounded by the over $21 million that you lost in revenue sharing that's been diverted over the past decade or so. My final point is this, is that there could be a push in the federal government to look at consolidating federal grants, simplifying them, perhaps reducing, even eliminating the matching requirements just by illustration. You know, one of the reasons why the roads are so bad in this area is that the way we fund the federal highway system is broken, it's not sustainable. It's based on motor fuel taxes, which because of our fuel economy standards on our motor vehicles, means that fuel consumption is going to decline increasingly over the next few years, meaning we're going to have less and less revenue. Furthermore, the way that we administer these federal funds in the US Department of Transportation, it's too complicated. My last point is this, the highway, the surface transportation funding through the Highway Trust Fund appropriates around $40 billion a year, but yet it's administered through five different agencies, through over 100 different programs. It's no wonder people in state and local governments can't get their hands adequately on this money. So I'm sharing this with you, is that federal officials understand this problem is national, that they contributed to the problem that you're experiencing, that our state law and state constitution really compounds it here, and you could see a movement to drive more federal dollars directly to local communities, as it happened briefly during the 1970s. So thank you for your listening to me here tonight. We look forward to working with you.
The next person on our agenda is Mr. Gerard Mullin.
Yeah, Mr. Gerard Mullin.
Each week, or does he kind of like math?
In January, he's on.
For the whole year? Does that, I mean, I just want to discuss this, he hasn't been here once. Can somebody from the administration reach out to him and know that he's on every agenda?
How about the first?
Oh, okay.
Madam President, my name is Gerard Mullin. My address is post office box 155, Southfield, Michigan, 40037. It was a dark and stormy late Monday afternoon, in fact, Monday, May the 12th, at about 4:45 p.m., when I inquired at the city clerk's office about submitting a request for recognition to speak at the Monday, June 16th, special budget adoption meeting, then I was told that there is no communication segment allocated for the budget meeting. I would like to ask this council a question. Are you folks familiar with the Open Meetings Act? To be precise, PA 267 of 1976, section three, subsection five, and I quote, "A person shall be permitted to address a meeting of a public body," unquote. What is the story here? Are you folks going to allow me, a Southfield resident, to speak at the next Monday, June 16th budget meeting, or not? Thank you, Madam President, thank you.
The next person is Courtney Ritchie.
Before I go on the record, I am Courtney Ritchie, Southfield resident of 24 years, and Southfield resident of Andover, 21191 Andover Road, 20 years.
And you've got three minutes, too, just.
I just wanted to ask a question before I got started regarding this June 16th.
No, your clock is, the time is ticking, so that's included in your question.
Oh, I won't ask that question now. I'm approaching the city council as I did back in December with a plea for some type of health intervention. I've made multiple attempts, I've done every single thing that was requested of me by the Southfield Building Department in order to secure a permit to proceed with restoration of my home. As of this date, I have yet to receive an explanation as to why I am not granted this permit, and at this point, the lien that the city of Southfield has imposed on my property has strangled my ability to move forward with even a sale of my property. And at this point, I'm begging this city council, as I did approach the mayor's office and her assistant said that she could not assist me, at the direction of the Attorney General, I am once again approaching city council before moving forward in a different venue. I am begging you to find out why am I not being issued a permit, and when will that lien be taken off my property? And that's all I have to say today.
Can you help us out, you, you can use.
And I want to say for the record that when I am, when you approached our office, we did contact the building department and the city attorney, and was advised, and the city, because it is a legal matter now, that once things enter into a legal arena, our powers as a legislative body is now taken to the courts, and that's why I couldn't help you, but I did hear the question.
So, you know, we remain in a position where this fire damaged house that was fire damaged just about two years ago now, for over a year, the building department and our office worked to try to get the property remedied, and ultimately, that did not occur, and Judge Richards issued a demolition order because nothing was being pursued. And it's complicated by the fact that there was no home insurance, risk insurance on the property. So the ability to go in and do what's necessary to preserve this house and make it habitable has been severely compromised by the lack of money. Even as late as Jan. Even as late as January this year, um, Ms. Ritchie did sit down with, um, Ms. Murray Greer and the building department, they worked out a schedule again to, you know, if you do this, these things, you know, we will try to work with you. That, that has come and gone, it's just, I, I would, I understand that, that right now she isn't, uh, 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 she cannot do much, because there is a demolition order, but what, what the building department has been asking is to come up with plans, approve plans, come up with the, what exactly they're gonna do, we've worked through administration when Mr. Sharat was here, and we just, we just keep hitting stumbling blocks. So at this point, uh, there is this order, um, and we continue to, we have continued to try to work, to see if there was a, a mechanism for Ms. Ritchie being able to do what's necessary to get permits and, and fix this house, but it's two years now, and that has not happened.
Okay, um, let me ask you one question, when is it scheduled for demolition?
The protocol that Ms. Murray Greer wants to follow at this point is because it's been two years in this condition, and it's been about a year since the order was entered by Judge Richards, she would like to have the house inspected currently, to see what the condition is, has it deteriorated, has it been improved, what, what's happened? And then go back in front of Judge Richards, after that inspection occurs, and said, Judge, again, you're either gonna say that this house should be demolished, or shouldn't be, and if he says that based on the current inspection, it should be demolished, then at that point, we would move forward with demolition. There is no precise demolition date set at this time.
Okay, so there's still some leeway. Will Ms. Ritchie to do some repairs and bring it up?
They won't let me, they sent the police, but I started doing repairs. I can't do anything if they won't give me a permit. I have submitted plans over plans, jump over hoops, roof fire, I have asked her to show you what I've done.
So, so, hearing that, she's trying to do it with.
Well, but again, it, it's a pull a permit, you have to, you have to be able to show what you're going to do, and can't, you can't just say that I'm gonna go in and I'm gonna fix the house.
I beg your counsel.
So you need to be able to show, I'm gonna replace twenty-two trusses that are damaged, or I'm going to, you know, take out this piece of property, I'm gonna remove the plumbing, I'm gonna redo the electrical, and if you're gonna touch electrical and plumbing, that you have a licensed person doing that, that you have, and, and that's where I think it continues to fall short. I would say this, though, that, that there, there will be an opportunity one last time in front of Judge Richards, and if he were to see things any differently than what he saw a year ago, you know, there, that would be the opportunity for Ms. Ritchie to, to make her case, because it will be back in front of Judge Richards.
But if she's saying she's not able to pull permit to do the work, and no work has been done, it's almost as if it's gonna be demolished, you, you see what I'm saying?
Well, but again, to pull a permit, you have to be precise in what, you can't, you, you have to have a list of everything that you intend to do, and how you go about doing that. What's your mechanism for, are you gonna rip out all the electrical that was, that was damaged, are you, what are you going to do? And just, that, I think, is where the problem has been with the permits, because there's never anything very specific about, what am I pulling the permit for?
Okay, if she provides the specifics as to what she's gonna be doing and pulling up permit, and she commits that.
Well, yeah, and again, this meeting that, that was held in, in January, there was a letter that went out saying, here's what we, here's, let's confirm everything we talked about in this meeting, this is everything we need so we can give you a building permit, and time was given. And, you know, here it is, June, that meeting was in January, things were supposed to be submitted within thirty days, it was, it, and it wasn't.
Okay, so if she's given another opportunity to.
She, she, uh, she is free right now, because we don't have an actual demolition date for the house, she should come into the building department tomorrow, and take that January list, and give everything that's in there, and go in, I think they would issue her a building permit.
Okay, so we're asking you, at that, that's what our attorney is saying, if you can bring in your list to the building department, and start all over again.
Follow the letter.
Follow the letter, that's it, we can do that, and hopefully, we can begin, you can begin the work, and you don't have to be, you know, so can you agree to do that?
I agree.
Can you agree, give the letter, do it again?
I beg this council to put someone else involved, because I've done.
Well, no, well, this is who we have in place, so we're just asking you to go back through the process again, get the list that was established in January, and let's see what happens. We don't want to leave your home, but at the same time, we try to make sure that it's in compliance.
It's a story to this, I will be quiet for a moment, and do what I believe is, but if it's a real story, just hear what I'm saying.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
My name is Pamela Gerald, my address is P.O. box one fifty-five, Southfield, Michigan, four eight zero three seven dash zero one five five. For the residents that are listening to this meeting via YouTube, I can be reached at two four eight three four six zero four three nine. As your independent voice, I am just a phone call away. This city theorizes or projects that tax abatements increase the city's tax base. What proof does this city have that tax abatements really work? Extraordinary statements require extraordinary proof. What is the city's proof that abatements have worked in the city of Southfield? If you have such proof, why don't you publish it on the city's website, or is this snake oil? For example, Southfield created a policy for tax abatement, which was passed in nineteen ninety-six, Denso applied for their tax abatement in nineteen ninety-seven, the tax abatement came into effect in nineteen ninety-eight. So for twenty-one years, and still counting, until twenty eighteen, Denso has rode on the gravy train of tax abatements in the city of Southfield. Residents have had to listen to gibberish from members of council and the city administration talking about the benefits of tax abatements to the people and to the community, yet, one of your paid consultants don't agree. It is purported that tax abatements don't benefit communities, because for that abated period on that certain amount of investment, no taxes are paid. I challenge anyone at this table, or anyone in the administration, to provide the proof to residents and answers to the following questions, and you might wanna write these down. Number one, in total dollars, how much money has the city of Southfield given away in tax abatements since nineteen ninety-eight? Lear, Denso, etc. Number two, how much revenue has been generated since tax abatement started, in reference to the amount given away, show us on a chart? And number three, or lastly, how many actual jobs were created as a result of these abatements? How many were Southfield residents? How many purchased homes in Southfield as a result of the companies getting the tax abatements and bringing employees to the city of Southfield? How many restaurants opened? We've had a lot of them to close, so check it out, and what was the benefit to the residents? And Mr. Moss, I applaud you, because you asked for this information about two and a half months ago, from the person that handles all of this, and I'm sure by now, you haven't gotten it. So it's either a stall tactic, they don't know how to comprise such information, or there is no data. So thank you for what you attempt to do for the residents, and let's see if we can get that information.
All right, we'll take a five minute recess, and we'll, um, we're gonna close session and entertain a motion.
Scored, need a roll call?
No.
Motion by Mr. Captain, supported by me, three more. Oh, Cybert?
Hi.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, it's a roll call vote. Roll call, yes.
Mr. Cybert?
Yes.
Mr. Seymour?
Yes.
Mr. Moss?
Yes.
Mr. Lance? Okay. Um, Mr. Frazier?
Yes.
Mr. Fracassie?
Yes.
Ms. Jordan?
Yes.
Um, Southern and Cybert are going to.
All right.
I've twice been offered a Burn Dale City Manager's position, and turned you down. Now, so there are certain things about Southfield, its size, its budget, um, during the dinner interview with Jim Sharat, I, I thought he and I could, could have a relationship, he was looking for someone to complement him in, in the economic development and, and the housing arena. At the time, we didn't know that so much of my time was gonna be consumed by the neighborhood stabilization, uh, project. We also had the stimulus, which had the energy grant and a lot of different projects, and, and I'll point out to council, a lot of the projects you're working on this year, started with the vote, we voted on in February two thousand and nine, Evergreen Road, both, both sections, eleven miles on that list, uh, we're, I, I could pull it out, and, and we were there. I do agree with Councilman Moss, a lot of our, we have been responding, but candidly, this council chose to respond to certain parameters. You said no layoffs, that you're, that you would try through a very different model. It is time to look at, at restructuring. I, uh, wanna, wanna speak about this, I clearly have, uh, some ideas about the building department, um, I think there is some restructuring that you stated happened there, um, there are things from the fees that are charged, to the use of communication with clients and that, um, you know, during the budget process, I handed out a sheet, and, and we've got technology relative to structure, much of our structure is defined by our city charter, and our collective bargaining agreements. When we start talking about structuring, it's a long-term plan to begin, what is your model going to look like? Um, you know, there's, you know, from, from the Fire Department, the mayor's statement about the budget process, we did meet with every department, and I think I started my first statement, my frustration over the ease that, that system, that I couldn't show you what the departments requested, and move that through from the mayor to the administrator. Had we been able to show that, I could have gone department by department and showed you, you know, for example, the Fire Department did ask to reestablish the reserve program, and had a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar line item in it. We're not out of the woods budget-wise, folks, I mean, we still need to be thinking about cost, and I use the term, we have to constantly examine our service delivery model and our costs, but we also have to be, make those decisions within the, the parameters defined by charter, ordinance, and then our collective bargaining agreements. And that part takes a, a, a little bit of time. I've clearly heard that council's not happy with the building department, particularly rental, vacant property registration, uh, the customer service pieces, I mean, those are, I've been, I, I, in, in high-rise buildings at four o'clock, when the electrical inspector was supposed to show up, took, went homesick, and not a call, not a text, nothing, went to the company, and, and the outrage of a company that, who leave work to a tractor. Marketing. For three years now, you know, I, I've watched the frustration increase about the inconsistencies in our messaging, and we do have some good resources that, I think, need to be brought together and harnessed in a more positive direction. Uh, I think part of it, though, is, and the administration needs to ask council, what messages do you wanna highlight the most, and use that structure? I think everyone in this room knows there's some historical tension among some of the key players in that group. My position on that is, we simply need to bring them together, let them have well-hanging successes, and begin working together. I think that will speak to your statement about morale as well. I mean, it's tough for our employees, and, and Jim heard this, as I hear it, Lori and Sue hear it, employees haven't had raises in five, six years, they're paying part of their, their, they're paying five percent of their pension, they're paying part of their health care, but there are other ways to reward people, and I think certain projects coming together and working together as a team. And we, we haven't gone through some of, some of that restructuring. I think there's some opportunities we've seen in the facilities, there are, are, in the budget, particularly, I think some things we talked about, Parks and Rec, from the new roofs to some facade, some wow statements, you know, and I'll use the Miracle League project, you saw the original bland building, I mean, we had, uh, building there, we had Parks and Rec, everyone from Parks and Rec, I had the planning, uh, people there, um, we had, uh, Tim and Jeff, and we stamped, and, and we did shuttle diplomacy, I had someone who wanted to get something in front of you folks as quickly as possible, and I went around the room, one by one, you know, is it, what we're talking about, is this what you can live with? I think bringing people back into the fold, letting them feel part of the team, empowers them and rewards them in ways that, that are important. And you're absolutely right, evaluations need to happen, I, I said, during my evaluation here, is I not only wanted anyone, I want the right to come back, you know, half here and say, folks, where am I at with you, am I hitting, those things, because I don't want it to be a year later and find out, I'm off.
Right, absolutely.
I, I, I should tell you, big job market, a lot of the city managers and, and my peers are, are, are moving on, because, you know, I, I, the, uh, former East Point City Manager stated this, I spent my whole, I spent thirty-two years here in East Point building a city, and now I've had to dismantle it. By nature, we are individuals, you know, in, in this profession, like to build and make things better, have task force, public art commissions, and we wanna truly move and advance our, our cities forward, um, none of us wanna dismantle it. The goals, I think we did outline some of our goals in the capital, I would like to see council more formally engaged, whether, you know, it's a one-day retreat in the library on a Sunday afternoon, or Thursday evening, um, again, that helps me, you know, if I'm looking to create my scorecard of what I do, I'm looking, that, that's what I'm gonna walk up, uh, Jim worked primarily on financial sustainability in these five goals, but within the five goals that you defined under, under Mr. Iguan, there are subsets that need to be added in every one of those categories, and we can work, uh, towards, uh, those. I wanna say, we have been in this retrenchment period, you know, we try to keep as many of our services going, our programs going, but there are new programs that need to be developed in Parks and Rec, and there are certain programs, they had Rhonda Terry in today, you know, I'll use this, Philly Human Services, fine, if we're going to keep that arena, I want to harness them more. Council president that I've talked about, let's bring all of our ministers and our faith-based organizations together, at least quarterly, our, our nonprofit service support organizations together, you know, build that, uh, that network, tell nonprofit entities, maybe we work with cable, and we say, how can we promote your services to that? But once we establish a network of, of working together, then we can begin to say, you know, I wanna have a task force that addresses a certain area of need, you know, I'll, I'll unemployment, you know, and maybe there's a task force that deals with skill development and unemployment for, you know, young African-American men, and I'll just throw that out there. Not seen us using the resources, when I got here, and I remember going through your audit before my interview, you're reading your, um, Sid, the Sid Southfield Living, and anything I could get my hand, I, I went through before that interview, and I remember thinking, man, I, human, I didn't even know that a city could have something like that, you know, especially this size, and I kept thinking, you know, what, you know, what can we do to, to advance? I think there are certain elements and things that we haven't fully harnessed. I think what we did with the Denso was a phenomenal collaborative effort, I think what council did with the Miracle League, it's a good program, and tonight, it's, it's advancing even for that, for, he, advancing even further. We have, uh, you know, tonight, I don't know if you heard, you know, we have adult disabled, disabled people playing baseball, before it was just children, and what that can do for our Parks and Rec department and the community. I think we have some wonderful resources that need to be harnessed, we have an incredibly talented population, when I, when I meet people here, and I think back to council meetings, and the people being appointed to the boards and commissions, what a phenomenal group. This is the third city I've worked in, uh, since ninety-four, prior to that, I was with the Regional Economic Development Group, seventeen communities. I didn't have a talent pool, we didn't have a talent pool that we have here, and I'm, I still don't think we're striking on all cylinders, I've listened to some of the lessons of, of the past, and I think it's, it's gonna be a combination of new ideas, some things we did very well in the past, being dusted off, and, and, and put out, revitalizing, and, you know, public arts ordinance is a good example of that, 'cause I'm somewhat scratching my head, how did this go away? Well, let's just move it forward and fix it. I'm very much, uh, in favor about, you know, moving, moving the city forward, um, I think Mr. Sharat and I had a good relationship, we had our differences in some things, I probably was, you know, I found myself sitting, getting very antsy sometimes, um, I'll also say that, you know, to the question of why Southfield, you know, I'm, I'm in that generation where we move on from job to job, but I'd said to our city attorney this morning. generation where we move on from job to job, but I'd said to our city attorney this morning, it takes a little bit more out of you every time you move on, you begin to hold back and that, and I like the idea of being able to harness what I've learned the last five years and move things, but it's not gonna happen without a direction from you folks, it's not gonna happen without the assistance of my colleagues, so I've got some work to do. Candidly, I feel I'm gonna have to ruffle some feathers before I can do some smoothing. And there are, you know, a couple of areas we've talked about, I'm sure you folks will get call, and you know what this SOP's done, or what he's talking about, you know, and it may be from union reps, it may be from some of the employees involved, and, you know, I will do my best to communicate those directional things, because I know how those calls impact you folks too, I mean, so, no, I kind of get all some of the remarks, and I'm certainly willing to go through whatever process this council desires.
Anybody else would like to add, ask any questions, Fred, if I'm efficient to reach?
I'd like to just, give me an idea.
My three by five card that Jim always said, make it more concise, I'm working on that.
The one thing is, what we, what I see that we have done in the past few years is, a lot of the initiatives come from the council toward the staff, about things to do. My vision of what the council ought to be is, we ought to, the staff ought to be bombarding us with, I want to do this, I want to do that, and we gotta say, stop, stop, it's coming too fast, let's prioritize it, and that's what I'd like to see. I'd like to see the staff coming to us with things that are gonna make Southfield a better place.
And I could tell you, going through the, with each department, there's a level of vibrancy that I had never seen, I went through that, and I think with a little bit of time and nurturing, that could really explode, and, you know, and obviously, I would work to temper staff, that things are gonna be done within financial constraints and that, but they are manageable. I think the Miracle League, we've now got two ADA restaurants that are service-based using volleyball courts and ball courts that we didn't have, so that, we could figure these things out. So what's the process?
Yeah, to that, I've got one question. I'm trying to, I've been trying to spread it, but I know where that had economic development, and we don't have anybody as, in the economic development department per se, how would you handle that, that division of duties?
Well, you know, we do have Shelley Freeman as our business development officer, but I do think we need to bring someone in, and I think today, we touched on an area, I'd love to bring a tax credit expert in. You know, we actually have a free process in what we're doing with energy, but I think there are a couple other people I'd like to bring into the team, either as full-time or project consultants. While we were in Mackinac, Marty, myself, and Shelley met with a company that's, you know, locally doing some AKT, we had conversation with George Jackson from Detroit, who are our economic development committee. I would look to bring a number of people in, kind of an umbrella-type organization. I may, at a certain time, recommend, hey, we need a central person to better coordinate some of these things. I think I mentioned during the Thursday's meeting about the retail coach, that was something that was an entity, so it may be a cadre of different consultants to help us. I am still convinced, and today I was on a phone conversation with Troy, we're part of the Smart Zone, and we're talking about getting, the Smart Zone is an LDFA that Troy got helped, they got automationally, our project within that LDFA was American Drive and the development that happened there, but we were talking, in order to get more assist, we can get a five-year extension, but if we want a fifteen-year extension, the folks at the state want us to make that a little bit bigger. So there's a discussion about looking for some strategic alliances, and make no doubt about it, Detroit is doing everything they can to get automationally in downtown. Sometimes I think the state isn't always looking out for our best interests, I mean, they just want it in the state. You know, so cadre the right group of people. For the longest time, I thought, you know, we've got California businesses leaving Texas, Texas is going in and off, California businesses moving to Texas because of the high cost of business, of operational cost in California, and we've got businesses looking in New York, going other places. I think, you know, one of them may be to have a couple brokers who exclusively sell Southfield, and, you know, we figure out a way to incentivize them to be out in San Jose, working the San Jose, San Francisco, then New York, and Connecticut island, and our competitive advantage is that it's low-cost to build business. We've got clear, clear things there, what I just said to you folks, I say at every meeting of the Michigan, MDC folks, is get us a couple brokers, you know, the same way you're out going to other countries, send someone to New York, send someone to California, you know, let's put rating, you know, Farmington, you know, we're cannibalizing each other, and for this region to grow, we do have a competitive advantage, we have outstanding educational resources, quality of life, our geographic location, all of those things.
We got a lot.
Mayor, one?
I guess I wanted to take Councilwoman Jordan's question a little further. All those things you named, the things that we could use, well, who's gonna coordinate? See, that's the issue, because you can get in it and you can grind because you're so good at it, but as a city administrator, the time that you would use doing that versus having someone in charge of that, and that is a concern I have, and your deputy might be that person, I don't know.
The deputy may be that person, but I candidly, I can get merit, a full-time type person, very focused, you know.
That's what I want to hear you say, because you have, you have the mission, but somebody's gotta be there working in them.
And I've obviously made a very conscious effort in my career path, from one of economic development, to move into administration. Candidly, it pays a little bit better, to be honest, but there's a cultural environment in it. I will tell you, I feel I got pigeonholed in Taylor, I started off as the director of administration in a strong area of government, and a few big projects came along, Village is a tailor that I spent a year on, we were creating a downtown development authority and LDFA, the mayor came to me and said, you know, what you just said, Mayor, I need one person to concentrate on this, I'll pay you more to do this, and that put me, that kind of pigeonholed me. But I also believe in a city, and the experiment I want to have, is that this is, economic development is a culture, we are constantly selling the city, from our police and our fire, to the quality of life that we sell for our residents, making the community a great place, the placemaking elements, all of that. But I firmly believe it starts at the top, with the mayor, city council, and I see that, I hear that from you folks. I like to be very candid, hear it more of the collective sometimes, and sometimes I walk away thinking, gosh, I hear them all saying the same thing individually, but I don't hear it coming together in a unified voice. I like to work to make that voice more unified and, you know, for that message. But I do think you're right, Mayor, it's a full-time, the same thing that Mr. Petonian came to me in ninety-eight, said, you know, we're about to launch one of the biggest projects in the city's history, time to make a decision, and it was a tough weekend, I mean, because I went from where I thought I wanted my career to go, into something, and I loved it, it was very rewarding, but I, you know, I think as city manager, city administrator, it's the culture you're establishing within the organization and your employees, it's just not at the top, it's got to run to everyone.
Absolutely.
So just one other question, the public works, what are we gonna do?
You know, public works, I think there's some modeling that I still want to do some examination, we have Mr. Sherrill's in the interim, I forget his exact title, I think there's more bench strength than we realize, and I'd like to, you know, have council spend some more time with people, and I want to do a little bit more evaluation on that. At the end, we may have to go out, but I also think, though, if we could fully harness, we've had three people who've been jockeying and were under Mike's tutelage for the last two years, I think they've learned a lot more than they've been given credit for, and they pretty much have the answers that we need. I want to spend a little bit more time examining that. At one point, I was, after Mr. Bowski left, I was actually proposing to bring in, through OHM, a consultant to come in and work there. I think there are some organizational changes, interesting, I'm not sure that I'm convinced that they're in, the type of person we need is in the tasks being performed, but are more logistical and accounting-type things, that I have had a conversation with two different CPA firms, that I might make sense to buy some time from them to help us evaluate some of our, more of our fiscal management over there, and how we make our priority decisions. During the budget process, I use the term mirror and mimic, public works, when you engage them, well, this is the way we've always done it, we've always done it. Now, so there is some benefits of new blood coming in, but not just on the operational side, but on that fiscal management side. I think there's some things that can be learned, and a good finance, a good CPA for a little bit of analysis, I think, could help us out there.
I just want to say this, I have, I get the phone call from the mayor's office, when they're frustrated with the city, you know, you and I, and I want to tell you the perception. One of the things that I want, a culture in the city, is that is of customer service. There are times when we have to say no, and a person may not get, but the ultimate thing is not to say no to everything, but to find a way to educate, to find a way to make sure that we, as a city, that we are being paid by the taxpayers, that we have that culture of customer service. And I have been in cities where a person just feel like their city love, I think our police and fire, they do a great job. I hear people complimenting them even when they're giving them a chance, and I want that, you know, in public work, I want it at the library, I want it everywhere, and our building department does not have it right now, and we know that. We have some people, I get a constant complaint about a person in the water department, you know, and these are departments that are being worked on, I understand that, but it's unacceptable, it's unacceptable for a resident to get a, to be disrespected in our city government. So I feel strongly you have it, that's a cultural thing, and people, we excuse a lot of things, because we are working to hack out our employees, but when we, in the restructuring, that's gotta be a leadership role, that you for seeing everyone that works for a city, and you know, it's just like that litter thing, our police department, when they're actually, they clean up the streets, it frustrates me sometimes that we have city staff driving all over the city, and I have to call someone to go pick up a truck that has dumped load or whatever, that should be all about. I mean, I shouldn't be the first one calling, you should be, you know, if they can't stop and do it themselves, there should be multiple calls then, because we want the city clean, and we, you know, sometimes I, then why do we as elected officials have to call and report something? We've got a whole crew of city staff out on the streets.
And you know, they had to drop, they dropped by night out today.
Yeah.
Can I comment on customer service, because there are certain, Michael Mannion and I briefly had a conversation about community relations, and, you know, we're better monitoring our customer service and response time, and I think that's something we need to give some thought to and do some improvement. There's no centralized tracking of complaints, and that's something that, you know, if there are modules available that could be set up where any councilperson could go in and read, you know, what's the status of this complaint, there are some things being done, Laverne and I have had conversations about, you know, enabling first innovation and using technology to do this, each year the state has an innovation conference, and customer service is a large focus of that innovation conference, and there are some things we could do, and, you know, and even, you know, it made the first point in my mind to start, and we actually are working on this, is in facilities, and when a complaint's called in, none of this stuff is tracked. So when you're calling to find out, well, has this plumbing repair been made, you're, I've gotta make six phone calls, this is, it's kind of, it's almost today crazy. That is something we're working on now, but I see it as having broader, you know, it'll take time to get there. You know, the other thing is, the Disney Institute, you know, empowering every person, and I will tell you, my first meeting with the public work staff, my responses, and my rule is, I expect you to use and exercise your best judgment, unless I've asked you or told you otherwise. And if I told you otherwise, and you're doing something, I'm gonna hold you accountable for it, but if there is something where my judgment's wrong, and you can look me in the eye and tell me, Fred, you're dead wrong, you know, I'll back you up, I, and I wanted these men and women to feel empowered, and that's part of a challenge in a political organization, because, you know, I, from elected officials, we're empowering our people to do something, sometimes there's a little bit of tug of war that goes on there, I studied in the last two cities I was in, so that too is a balancing act.
Good, economic development, that is so important, not only that we're out there marketing the city, but that council, mayor is aware, may be aware, but I'll tell you, I went to a meeting the other day and ran into the regional chamber of commerce, and telling you, I work with so-and-so, and I'm saying is, you know, if you have somebody on the hook from the Italian council that's looking for something, and I guess, and it goes on either tax abatement, it's like, do this, I'm not going to tell you what's going on. And council very seldom knows, communication with Jeremy said, you know, somebody called me the other day, for example, on a building, and he said, we have some investors that are interested, can you find me a user? And this thing's been on the block for a long time, but you don't, you don't, you don't get anything back, and if it's a tax abatement, you know, it's like, we're bad guys if you don't approve it, and you go along on a whole line, and then all of a sudden, it's whack, or how many of us have seen, you know, something happen, and you never heard of it, or you don't, you know, I go to that comedy club, and I'll hear, I was looking at this building in your city, but you don't, you don't hear about what's happening from the economic development side. You look at how many times, here you have a channel that goes to maybe ten percent of the constituents here, and the vote in the board is still down. They came with the whole thick string of stuff that we were supposed to order, and then in this thing into the council chambers, I mean, whoa, what is that big thing, you know, I mean, communication in economic development is so important, and when I was exchange mayor, I'd go and see these departments, and boy, they've got a guy at the counter, what do you need, what is, you know, what kind of space do you need, what kind of property do you need, what kind of zone do you need, and they're right there on top of it, and, you know, our departments, first of all, are not set up for that. I mean, you go upstairs and see the planner, that's not very inviting, you know, what is it, Westland, I think, has, they stole our planner, Phil Runhill? Yeah, you know, you go there, the one building, you know, there's nothing but economic development, I mean, you go into there, and they've got the maps and this, and any kind of information you want, how can I help you, how can I assist you? And not only that, but then, the political side of it is, they know that you're on track to try to make this happen, but, boy, I'll tell you, I mean, even the benches across the street, I, you know, that, in the city center, I mean, it was, nobody picked out the trash cans or the benches, did anybody? Did anybody here sit, or through those, had a fence go up to Inglewood? Nobody knew about it? And I looked at the site plan, and all of a sudden, oh, just do that. Oh, how did, excuse my name, how did you just do that? I mean, it looks beautiful, and it's nice, it really adds to the character of the place because it's a barn there, but, but, I mean, are we bad guys? I guess that's what I like to tell all these staff people, or, can't you tell me something that's confidential and it stays in the room? My owners say no. But, but, I mean, but it has to exist. I mean, we were working with AMC, stealing AMC out of Detroit, in that building they were in, and council knew about it, and boy, for two years, you never heard a boo. And all of a sudden, it happens. But the economic development, you know, that's what's happening around here, whether it be Auburn Hills stealing something, or, or this one doing something else, or this company's looking for something, you know, we don't, we, we, nobody comes to you and say, hey, do you have any connections with so and so? You know, or what happens here, or what happened there? It just doesn't happen. You're not part of anything. And, and it's not that, that you want to get involved in it, but, boy, it's really tough out there, you know, especially, I'm out there, you know, with real estate all the time, and business guys, and I hear things through the back door, you know, look at, look at what's happening at St. Beat's place, everything's tore down. Now, they have a balance field come up. Balance field says, you're doing it at your own risk. Well, I don't know what, what anybody promised them. I mean, it is, and tore everything down, and, and, and then I said at the same time, I don't know, I think it's through Jerry, Jerry, you know, they're not cutting the grass outside the fence, it looks terrible. You know, it looks seeded. I did, they have to keep the grass, at least cut, while they're under construction, on the reason, on the right away, if somebody's got to cut it. But, you know, I mean, and I, and I agree with Mayor, we, our guys don't stay on top of everything or explain why, if, if it is done. I mean, I had complaints that the grass wasn't cut in Inglewood, and the ball players were saying, man, let's, who's taking care of your fields over there? You know? And, and I said, well, it's under construction. And, and so, so now, you know, I tell the guy, go back, look at it now, now that all the work is done. And he said, yes, the improvement, you know, but I don't know why the grass wasn't cut. If I knew, you know, that that was on the list, that it tore right then and there, well, it's all under construction, I made it up. I didn't know why. I live next door to it. You know, I mean, maybe if I didn't walk, the grass is that high, you know, it leaves the softball out in the field. And so, but I, I just think that, that, that you gotta have to have a team working on everything. And if, if the players don't want to be on a team, then, then they gotta be set aside. It's that way. And, and, boy, for cable not to be talking constantly about the city, they, they have some of the worst people on there talking and lecturing, it sounds as bad. I just seen them having a video about the city, or about what Ken was talking about, or they showed his slides, or whatever, isn't it? I mean, anything that, that talks about the city and the good things about the city, I don't want to, and I turn that channel fifteen, and there'll be a guy talking about something, it's three, four people in the audience, and they tape it, and I said, my gosh, they spent time taping something, they're pretty, they sound wanted. You know, and, and, and I guess, you know, you sit back and say, hey, am I a complainer? Maybe I'll just shut up and let it happen. And that's where you get after a while, you say, well, heck with it, you know, I'm tired of saying it, so you don't say it anymore. But, I don't know, I, I, I just think we have to be really aggressive. I'm a competitor, and I just can't see us, especially with the state gonna help Detroit, and now you're talking about automation alley, and, and it's automation alley can do their thing, but, you know, Southfield was the smartest. And we gave that, expanded that area, you know, and that whole purpose was that we could get the, the businesses that come into Michigan, and, and they steered us. Now, they just broaden the area. If they buy into Detroit, I mean, Dan's got, there were over fifty buildings now, I mean, do they really need another economic development guy? I mean, he's buying everything, he has what, almost a billion and a half dollars now in buildings? I mean, it's, I don't, I don't need to help Detroit. I mean, I'm serious, I mean, they got a one-man show, I would say, look, you got a two-man show. We don't have anybody in our city that, that says, hey, you know what, I want to be a major partner with city, with Southfield. And we gotta start finding somebody that, that cares about the city enough to take this thing across the street and run with it, you know? And, and it seems like we're always, you know, pushing the wheelbarrow, and, I mean, and there's nothing in it.
I'm, I'm listening, there can be to that point, I mean, we had the community breakfast, and I think that's something that we need to continue doing at that scale. I do believe there's, you know, before you speak about this, the concept of the Southfield summit does make sense, and we need to get over some of the territorialism. The message that I think we didn't hit, hit on during that community breakfast was the request that we need champions, me too, everyone in that room, you know, regardless of whether they're Fortune 100 companies, you know, the small business that we had, from small to, from the yoga shelter, we need every one of them to be a champion for Southfield. If it's the yoga shelter just offering classes for Southfield kids in conjunction with, you know, yoga club at the school, I don't know if they had such a thing. Or saying to Leir, why are you building two Olympic-sized pools at Rouge Park? You know, and it's things like that, that those champions, we need to ask. I think the public art that was discussed earlier gives you a great platform. We build it clear consensus, we identify, you know, pads where we'd like to see things go, we did the MDOT clearance, and maybe we ask each of these corporate entities to sponsor it. But the message is simple, and yes, you know, eventually you'll get a Dan Gilbert. For years, though, we've had a lot of people who built the skyline that most people across the country think this is Detroit. I mean, we know we're in Southfield, they see that skyline.
But how that town center happened was, was because council with statesmen and, and made a decision that everybody in the city was ready to take us to court, feed us up. And we had people coming here, and they had, they had sound out in the lobby, and even out in the midsection over there, people against this high-rise. One lady came, I'll never forget it, and said, you know, this change of the big building is going to get in their backyard and not gonna, tomatoes aren't gonna rise. I mean, I mean, this thing, I mean, everybody took a hit to make it happen, you know? And originally, we're supposed to have an ice skating rink with, with a atrium in it. And we said, we don't need hockey, ice skating rink, we want something tropical because we have winter, and that's what made them do that. But, I mean, it, it was, everybody was part, we used to be every Monday, every Thursday, and we'd go through these processes, you know, and, and just like we do tonight. It was twice a week, once a, once a month on Saturday morning, you know, maybe the project must bring it in. But, but, you know, when you, when you have to get things moving, you're gonna have to do more, and you're gonna have to catch up. And we're just still scheduling ourselves like La La Land, and everything's great. And I guess, you know, I've been around so long, I've just seen what it took, the sacrifice it took for us to meet, to take time out of our lives to make something happen. And, and, but, you know, I just, I just get so irritated when I, when I see things happening in Detroit, and the state, you know, and Bell Isle and all this stuff, and I'm sitting here and saying, well, so, okay, now they're gonna build Detroit, they're gonna make me a son. They're gonna take all my money, and I'm gonna, are they gonna come and save me later on? They haven't done anything to save me. I mean, we don't, and, and the other thing is, I think that we have to really maybe join forces with somebody and get some lobbying done for the suburbs. And we're just not, we're not getting, you go down to Simco, that, that's Detroit, you know, mass transit, that's all they talk about, you know? And, and I'm sitting there and saying, hey, but I got, the roads falling apart, you know? And, and so, we have to get, we have to build an army to, to, to compete and, and to get some money into our suburbs. And, yeah, because if not, I'm telling you, we just, we're gonna, I, I see so many empty commercial buildings now, so much emptiness, we don't have small businesses starting, we don't bother and get smaller, we don't have any, you know, incubators. Dan Gilbert now is bought in Corktown, and he's gonna move his techies over to the building, and he's now gonna go get research people. You know, we could have a research quarter, you know, I tell them down in DDA, you know, they could have, take a part of that land and throw it, throw it out of there and build some pharmaceutical research and broaden it. I'm tired of going down here to Novi, and they just keep building and building and building, and, and now my doctors only once a week over here, and, and those in four days over there, I make an appointment, I don't have anything open for Southfield, they have to come to Novi. And you get kicked off about that, you know, it's, you know.
Economic development, that, that Councilman Fakasi brought up. I mentioned that when we were doing our budget thing. I didn't see any money in our budget for economic development. And some of the things that I, that I see, and it's, I think it's on the edges of economic development, but it's, and Cosmo Fakasi brought this up a couple meetings ago, and that was years ago, when business wasn't up to snuff, people went over and business, you know, contingent.
It was a hit team.
Yeah, we're going there. And what I see is, and I'm just gonna use this as an example, the Myers store, it's not that old. When you go in that Myers store, half the stuff you need is not on the shelves. The store is not particularly clean. The folks aren't all that happy to, to, you're talking about customer service, you, you don't get a great customer service. But you go to a Myers, you go to the Myers in Bowen, clean store, bright store, you know, you have to put sunglasses on because the lights are shining off the aisle, you know, shelves are well-stocked. Why isn't our store like that? I think we need to have, if it's a hit team, we're gonna say, look, bring this store up to, up to par. We, we found a place for you in the city of Southfield, and you wanted to be here. Be like you want to be here. But we have other, other places, you know, and I don't know what to do about Northland, but something has gotta be done about Northland. It's, you know.
I hear Macy's, by the way, I hear Macy's is good.
Well, they're, if you go in there, they already left.
Yeah, they, they, I just heard that they're on the block to, to, and I said, my gosh, Macy's looks out there, the only thing people go there to really basically.
Yeah.
The whole thing is gonna be garbage.
Yeah, the Target is right behind there, but.
Target's still a little.
What we, I think we.
Number one Targets store, by the way.
To Macy's, what was discussed in Las Vegas, when our staff, Alan Chelley, that was the store, is the watch list, not the investment list.
Nationally?
Yeah, nationally. And for the first time, they, in the past, the message was, our sales per square foot are very robust, and that, they were sinking different too this last time, our sales per square foot. I think you're kinda hitting on some of the same thing. I think of, you know, last fall, my wife and I were in, kind of, same thing you were talking about bridal, I think it was you and I were talking about bridal registry, we were down, it was a horrible experience. And we, we ended up going out home and doing it online, which, we were here, you know, we talked, few minutes running, you just give, and it was not a good experience.
But, but that gets back to what George Jackson does in Detroit. They see a youth, and they actually find people with a vision and, and really transform them. We don't, we don't have that. We keep saying we don't own it. None of that property that has been bought, I mean, they find the people that have the money to buy it. They have a vision, this is what we want there. They find the investors with the money. That's something we don't.
Let me.
We're not finding the people with the money.
Mayor, I, I don't know if I have a PowerPoint.
And then if one of them do it, then you shouldn't be doing that.
But we need, we need to have a better vision. I can show you things we did for Southland Law, that it was a period that when General Grove Properties just bought it, and they lost it during the Great Recession, and fortunately, they sold it back to Ralph's Corporation, the guy who owns Northland looked at it during. I think, and I can show every one of you the PowerPoint, we need to have a clear vision there. And I will tell you, I really, from my perspective, your vision is to have someone come in, take the exterior elevations, put some new architecture on them, you play off the green filled corridor for your power centers, and you look at the old aerial photos, you deball them, or you go back to what was originally built, is you go to the opening air malls today at 123, Villages of Rochester, Villages of Rochester used to be Metal Brook Mall, Interior Mall, got deballled and completely torn out. I think with a little bit of visioning, we go back to the early thing and then show. I am very worried about Macy's. Macy's also went on to go on that, or to alter the mall when our staff met with them, went on, that the folks who bought Penny's haven't even talked to them about the whole parking lot bit. And we've got a very unique mall that none of the original anchors owned that parking, which, now, Eastland, Westland, Southland, the Mervis, which are now defunct.
But they got reciprocal parking?
Yeah, but the mall controls it all. I mean, Macy's typically holds so many, in most malls, they'll each own a minimum number, and the rest is shared, they share a bunch of each other. But this was even an issue, apparently there's someone looking at, I believe it's the old Firestone Building, along Green Filter, that the parking there is becoming an issue. But I, I agree with you, it's time, it's time to hire a good architect planner for five, $10,000, develop a good PowerPoint of what our vision is. Then you take something like that to the retail coach, or in the past, the city worked with, John, there's a firm that specializes in cycle, social cycle, the, the.
Buxton?
No, Buxton, yes.
But I even heard that Yeller is getting into development now.
Sheldon?
Yeah, it's homegrown. I mean, that's a.
Well, and the Co. Mall's an excellent example of what's happening there right now. And then, you know, and I will tell you, Thursday night, or Thursday, I think someone brought up the new retail in Robbins, having been in Taylor for, it's the third time that that same site has moved forward, each time with a different developer. So, you know, I'm holding my breath, but when Richard Marsh was there, I remember he had one that looked, looked great, never happened, and all of these things are, are open. But I think we, as you said, Mayor, we need a clear vision, and then we need to buy the investors, and then even sometimes being able to really to, the GIBs report, I think, has the, a lot of strength that, I also think the report has some weaknesses. I think in some ways, it wasn't as strong as we originally thought it was, but I think there's some certain things that'll work. And, you know, I, I think part of this concept is, well, what happened with the old town twelve mall? Now, how Southfield worked to reposition that as a Brownfield plan? It's a shame we don't have the old incentives that we used to have on it with the Brownfield tax credit, and the Ramco version said, got a million dollar tax credit on that deal. I think, I think they got two out of it.
I think, I think we, we do need to attract new business, but I think we need to work with businesses that we already have, because that helps attract new businesses. And it seems like a lot of the businesses are saying, well, that's good enough for Southfield. Well, we gotta tell them, that's not good enough for Southfield.
I agree.
And, uh, you know, you need to up your game, uh, so...
Salary's short.
Yeah, right. Uh, now, to, uh, completely change the subject, are we gonna be, let's, let's assume that we vote to, uh, make Fred our city administrator. We talked about going out to, uh, look for a deputy. But doesn't that fall against the charter? Doesn't the, doesn't the city administrator bring a deputy to us?
Right.
Whose responsibility is to get the deputy?
Well, you would authorize him to go fill that position. I think that's all you'd be saying, that you want him to fill that position.
Okay, but, uh, we wouldn't be doing the work, he'd be doing the work.
Right, right.
Okay, so that we...
Exactly, he brings someone to you for confirmation.
Okay, because, you know, in the past, when we were doing the administrator, you know, we did all the work.
For the administrator, yeah, yeah.
And I just wanna make sure that we don't leave the room thinking that if Fred turns out to be our administrator, that now we take the initiative to write the, the position description.
Oh, right, right. Certainly, you know, Fred might, he might wanna have some conversations with each of you before he does that, but...
Oh, Cosmo, how do you wanna move forward? Do you want to, um, look at another date, stay again?
We need to see the contract and, and the salary, uh, what's proposed before we vote on it.
Well, it's difficult to, I mean, that's your call. You decide what...
But we don't have any, the only thing we have is Jim's.
Right, it, the boilerplate's probably the same. I mean, the, the salary, Jim was at one thirty-seven and some change. That was his salary. He got six weeks of vacation. I think he had six hundred dollars a month in car allowance, um...
Life insurance for the buyer, to get an annual physical.
Who writes it, the, the attorney or the, uh, human resources?
No, in the past, I think it would have been a combination of putting those two together. And I think in the past, Jack worked on it, HR would have worked on it and brought a co... And I think that's what we were even today, kind of discussing. If there had been some decision tonight, even if it was just a consensus, about moving forward with Fred, then maybe a contract would have been, you would have given us some parameters, we would have worked on a contract, and it would have been on Monday's council agenda for you to act on the contract. Because certainly the, kind of, the, then the philosophical, we're gonna appoint somebody, then you've got a contract that, that you need to feel comfortable with and authorized that it be executed. But, you know, and again, a lot of it is standard boilerplate, um, a lot of it, you know, Fred did look at those, that kind of acquired contracts, so he knew kind of what had been offered in the past. But again, some of the direction in the past had been the council president works with, maybe HR and legal, and they put together a contract, they negotiated a contract. So, some forms, that was done with Dale, that was done with Dale.
But other than that, that wasn't the norm.
But I, I think, you know, I don't wanna drag my feet, I don't wanna be accused of, but, but I think, even if we have a one-hour meeting, that we ought to see the contract, so if there are any questions, they get answered before we act on it.
Well, and if you would give parameters, we certainly could give, for example, if you, if you wanted to do this next Monday, we could, you know, do an hour beforehand with a draft of a contract.
Because I know, we, we have to get the, uh, Mr. Ficassi's issues in there about the vacation and...
Right, right, right.
Physical.
Right. Can we get, can we get the boilerplate and whatever, uh, maybe at least, uh, a sample of what it would look like?
Sure, absolutely.
And, and, and get your council time to get that document and look at it and have a meeting to review that, so that this week, I mean, this is only Monday. So, we could have that and get, you know, have a meeting, uh, I mean, have to agreeable council, have a meeting just on...
Just on the contents of the contract?
Not just on that, and then we could be ready to roll on Monday.
Sure, well, and again, we're...
That makes sense.
Yeah, it does.
We would just basically use Jim's contract, um, as the guide. You make sure that those kind of things, that, that the physical is already in there, uh, the, the vacation provision is six weeks, and you can cash in four, which means you're either gonna take two or you lose them. So, maybe we would say, "Here, you must use two."
Yes, I was gonna say...
You shall use two.
This is back to Lee Iacocca, because he doesn't want anybody working for him that won't take at least one week's vacation.
Okay, so we can...
I wanted the evaluation, that, that there'd be an annual, at minimum, an annual evaluation.
So, include that, okay?
Six months, I have to see.
Okay.
Fine, but I said it minimum.
Okay, it's, uh, uh, would it be, would it be, uh, proper, I guess, to see how other administrative contracts are? If there's new provisions, if there's new provisions that may be, I don't know, if we want to, to, instead of keeping up the same contract and changing numbers, that we do, look at, at some of the latest contracts to see...
That's, that's...
No, it's not. It's not this practice, because this practice will be, I got some toilet paper.
And we can get some comparable. Now, what, we can get our comparables amongst, you know, Farmington Hills.
Yeah, it could be that they, they have to be, uh, fluent in techn- new technologies, you know? Right, I mean, right.
And speak three languages.
Right. And I'll tell them.
Yeah.
I have to speak South Korean, and if we're gonna do the sisters.
Yes, so, so I, I, you know, to me, I mean, that's just as far as I can sure, around the table, I've already heard, is that we're all in favor of Fred subject to proving a contract. That's what I, am I wrong?
No, that's, yeah, that's what I heard.
And we can have that meeting, uh, on Monday prior to our regular...
Could do that.
Just a special meeting for...
We're starting early with the budget.
Five o'clock.
Oh, that's right, six thirty is budget.
Right.
Five o'clock?
Five o'clock.
Is that enough time? Five o'clock, is that enough time?
Give you an hour and a half.
I'm fine with it, I don't care if I'm late. Just one extra minute.
So, what's your point?
For me?
Sure. I think in a catchact, it ought to be that the administrator can only bring eight real tents to, to all...
We need to count them tonight.
But I thi- I think, but I, I do think that a chair that, if we get the sample confident well in advance of...
Do you not want to say well in advance? You're not wanting to try and justify it?
Well, I'm, I'm saying is that, you know, what, it seems like...
We're talking two weeks.
Uh, that particular item, what?
No, it's not even...
Oh, next Monday, yeah, right, right.
Yeah, it's irregular.
Yeah, then they'd be sent to us, you know, as a confidential matter and, and, and we can review it.
By Wednesday?
Boilerplate, I mean, it's, it's...
I just want to get some time that council can come to that hour and a half meeting and, and have some idea of what, they can just note, so what they would like to see changes, to get a consensus on one contract, that's all.
So, when would you want?
Whenever, you know, just get ready.
But not five, you don't want a regular family.
No, I just wanna set them each set.
Okay.
Right, at least at eight and four.
Even at five, you know?
I don't wanna, I don't wanna speak to...
Now, we can get five of you.
I don't wanna...
We'll figure it.
Email work for me?
We'll, we'll do five emails and...
I'll come over there, no, come over there, that's nothing.
Okay, okay, okay.
You know, we'll put council...
We'll shoot for Wednesday.
I have a show here, but I mean, I, I... Show here, that work?
It's fine, yeah.
Everybody? Yeah?
Okay, so we're gonna send it out by email?
Yep.
We said Wednesday, and then when are we having the meeting?
Well, there'll be a special meeting...
Special meeting Monday, five.
Schedule it, or...
Well, you have to do a real tent. Yeah, we could do it, we want to do another real tent.
I wasn't gonna say that.
I'm a real...
If I don't do anything else, I'm gonna have everybody having a nervous chicken before this.
If we're supported in the idea...
We have motion by, uh, motion for a real tent by Jeremy, forty-five, uh, Cyber, all in favor?
Aye.
I oppose.
I move that we schedule a special council meeting for the purpose of discussing the contract of city administrator at five o'clock on Monday, June, the day of sixteen.
Support.
Dave Wall in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed motion here?
Whereas Sidney was all right.
He was wrong, we're later than that.
There's one item, Jeremy, I really wanted to clarify in terms of, you said we get the communication late, we get our package late, and we're supposed to be ready Monday. That's just how it's been. That's how it's been, it's nothing changed, um, to get the information on Friday evening.
It's more, it was more helpful last year when there was a detail, and, not even a detailed, but a memo of what to expect, uh, and I'm, I'm saying, maybe administration and council president can, uh, can bring that forward, but I've been on council for three years, so a third of the time that I've been on council, that was helpful, that was helpful.
No, I, I just think it's...
I'm, I'm, it's not a critique, it's just, it's an improvement of the process, it worked.
And, and I could put words in this, but, but say, for example, you have consent agenda, and you get it late Friday, and you may not open it Friday, you may open it Saturday. So, maybe Sunday, if I got a busy weekend, right? Now, you only have Monday morning to get your answers if you have a question on anything. And, and that could strain on staff, people even, you know, they try to answer, but if you, like, we have consent judgment, or consent, uh, agenda, and, and you got...
Yeah.
Eleven items...
Items A through P, you know?
Yeah, you know? See, council president, you go through, you just go through those.
Usually not so much anymore.
You know what I mean, you go through them, but then, you know, council president, they didn't go through those, but you guys meet, you know?
It was, it was helpful, because it was just a heads up.
It would, it worked.
Yes.
It really worked.
I sent it on Thursday.
Yeah.
You what?
I sent it out on Thursday.
After, at the...
After council president, right.
Why can't you have Jim's staff meeting up, and then you move the package up?
We, we've actually, we've changed a number of things, the deadline for staff to...
It's simply hard to do, isn't it?
To move is now Friday, uh, four o'clock. It used to be you could bring it right up. Everything is being placed on a shared drive, an L-drive, that goes from the agenda to the president's meeting. The next meeting, we're actually going to, I'll be assigning electronic signature right there. But I was, I, I, there might be a way to get to this, uh, I bad, I, I have an edit committee, uh, everything in that, uh, as they're submitted to the L-drive, Linda State reviews them, sets them up in format, and be, by the time Wednesday rolls around, uh, Thursday, I've signed off on them in a tweet. So, agenda staff, we're, I'm trying to get it, we're working with the clerk's office to be more concise, where the clerk can walk up, where, uh, knowing what's there, Thursday's president's meeting. But we could probably, I've asked Michael Mannion to be involved in more of the finer editing, but I could change his assignment to say, "Michael, I need you to do a summary of each of the major items." But that way, we could have something hitting, you know, Thursday afternoon, right after president's meeting. And here's the items coming forward.
Sure, that works.
And the next meeting, we'll sit there, I'm literally gonna have it on the screen, and we'll be, you know, approving them. But we've been, in the last couple of months, we're refining it, trying to work with the clerk as she moves to her new system as well, so... And we've had some hiccups in it, and I could, there's, one day I wanted to straighten the whole thing, but it is getting kind of, but you couldn't, but, you know, it is subject to change on it, so that, so that, you know...
'Cause it could, if something happens...
Move for you, it doesn't.
Right, in five years, so both of us. And then we're, we're, instead of having all staff here, if you need, if you got a night, I'd become, we'll move to a monthly staff.
And just another comment about moving technology forward, as we all should adapt to new technology. I mean, even just an emailable, even if it's being updated, you know, even after the council president's meeting, there's some sort of system that, you know, those who are comfortable going online and checking the agenda on Thursday, I don't need it, you know, I don't need a, you know, special handholding, but I'd just like access to it, um, to, to digest it. There's something that could be placed online right after the council president's meeting, that a council member can check out, that's, it could be as easy as that.
Well, and I think everyone's aware of that, we're working towards bringing, um, the meeting paperless. And we're just about there, but, um, part of the problem is, we need a table to accommodate the new proposal that we're hoping to bring forward. We wanna make sure that each council person is properly trained on whether you're gonna use an iPad or a laptop. iPads are the problem, and we're, and we're there, we're just in the final stage, and I know some of the people here around the table want it, but, you know, we talked about moving forward. We have to set the example, and when we send out emails, there's some people around this table that are very good in responding, others, they don't respond at all, so...
Some are mailboxes, as well.
Well, but, we have to lead by example, and it's just the way of the world, so...
You have different styles, so I think you'd have to accommodate that.
No, and I agree, but if we don't have the time, sometimes the email is the easiest way to approach. But it's hard, because you, it, it's more efficient, you can't email, call someone, text someone when you didn't answer, and when people don't respond, we have no more time, because we're doing more with less, trying to accommodate the public, put things together, and we need to work together. So, hopefully, the new technology that we're proposing to bring forward, the majority of council will use. I know some people are not happy with it, but it's the way of the future. We have to move forward, because we're... Yeah, most communities are all on it, we're, we're way behind.
See you on the Tuesday, Jim, and so on. All right, see you then.